Recording in progress.
Alright, everyone, thank you for coming. Can everybody hear me? I'm quieter than usual. We'll call me at order at 6:02. Could everyone please stand to pledge allegiance to the Constitution? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. The mic will be turned off, please. And our screen is not second-hand. You guys can see this.
Thank you, Mayor. Let the right of reflection that all council members are present.
Okay, in conflict of interest declarations. Any changes or deletions to the agenda?
No, no changes to the agenda, Mayor.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I can't, I can't hear you. Is your mic on?
My mic is on.
You're closer to it?
This is better? Thank you. Okay, be held comments. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. For City Council policy, three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Do we have anyone in our audience to make above the comment? Seeing no hands, Mike, when you're ready.
Do you want to get a hand on mine and get the screen out?
Yeah, let's get the screen up. Make sure that there's no one virtual.
Right, I'm not getting any argument with the screen from top system.
Okay, seeing no hands on our attendees list, we'll move on to proclamations and presentations. First presentation is student liaison in court. I'd like to introduce our new student liaison at her first meeting. Name is Teresa Garcia Zambrano. Would you like to introduce yourself and talk a little bit about yourself? If you don't mind, please, if any, your presentation.
Okay, um, so my name is Teresa Garcia. I'm a senior at Cloverdale High School. Um, this is my first meeting, so, um, I don't know. I'm excited to be here, um, and I hope to represent Cloverdale High School just.
Thank you so much. Any comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd just like to welcome you and thank you for taking on the responsibility. We look forward to your reports and thank you for being here.
You're so welcome. And just to let you know, it's really important for you to, you know, keep us up to date on what's going on at the high school and what the students are doing and what's going on in the district. And we really look forward to your updates, so welcome.
Teresa, great. Bienvenida. Thank you for being here. Thank you for applying and to be interested in civics. As a matter of fact, I hope that you are in, oh my gosh, I forget his name, as in the government class tomorrow. I'm going to be presenting to five classes between tomorrow and Friday. It's important that youth, especially Latino youth, is engaged, involved, and that you have a voice, not only here in council, but also at school and throughout community. I have been the mentor for the youth here in the last four years. And even though I will not be in council after January, I welcome you to come in anytime, always here as the community leader to serve and to continue to nourish my youth, our youth. Thank you.
So Teresa, do you have anything you want to present to us right now? Or anything, talk about what's been going on in CUST or?
Um, so far, we don't really have much going on, especially since after homecoming. Um, kind of just back to like normal, like nothing really, um, interesting going on.
Perfect. Alright. So then we'll move on to C2, a proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month.
Really quick, Mayor, it looks like Vice Mayor Walter had his hand up.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Walter.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Teresa, I just wanted to say welcome. I'm calling you in today from down in California. But anytime you would like to chat with me about anything, I'm more than happy to be able to get you. So my phone number is there, there is a call. So please, I'll open any questions to my app. And thank you for calling, hearing you, for this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Is there anyone who would like to read this?
Oh, yes, definitely. Thank you. We have to be very resourceful. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale proclaiming the month of September as National Suicide Prevent, uh, Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas September is known as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which helps promote resources and awareness around the issue, the issues of suicide prevention, teaching how to help others and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, or background. And whereas suicide is the third leading cause of death among young people. And where a city of Cloverdale, California, is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, scout leaders, and parents as partners in supporting our community in simply being available to one another. And whereas local and national organizations like Suicide Prevention Services are on the front lines of the battle that many still refuse to discuss in public. And whereas the youth of our community should understand that throughout life's struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all fighting our own battles. And now therefore be proclaimed that the City of Cloverdale, City Council of the City of Cloverdale, encourage all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. So, so now therefore be further proclaimed by Mayor Todd Lance, hereby proclaim the month of September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Cloverdale. I am happy to see Becky here, who is one of our mental health professionals in the City of Cloverdale. Uh, I don't know if there are any other teachers here, but I also see Alexander Valley Health here. So thank you for being present because you are where we end up when these situations come about. To me, this is very personal. And as it says in the proclamation, we don't want to talk about this in public, and it is essential. I have a daughter who attempted suicide at the age of 14 and a half. Since then, she's had three liver transplants, which also brings to the attention of donation, organ donation, as a very important aspect in our lives and in our country. So I do encourage everyone to take charge of being in touch with all of those who you care about, those who you know, those who you love, and say it is okay to have a difficult time. It is okay to come out and reach out and allow a hug, a kiss, just I am here. So with this, thank you, Mayor Lance and council for this awareness. And who is going to be receiving this?
Becky Ennis is here to receive this proclamation. Becky is part of our La Familia Sana board. She's part of Resilient Cloverdale. Uh, she has served on the county mental health board and she's also the SOS Community Counseling. And so she is, uh, has her hands in just about everything involved with safety, resiliency, and mental health in our county. And we are so appreciative to have you as part of Cloverdale. This also hits home for a lot of us. And if anyone else wants to say anything before Becky goes, okay? Alright, please.
Oh, well, thank you. Usually I like to be a little bit more informal and casual, but as you said, this is a personal topic as I have lost a childhood friend in 2012 to suicide. So just a couple moments, if you will, um, wanted to update you. The proclamation was accurate. I just want to share with you that the CDC this year released that it is the second leading cause of death in children the age of 10 to 14 and third among people 15 to 24, 12th in the nation overall. Um, among those who die by suicide, 45, 46% have been diagnosed with a mental health condition and 90% have experienced symptoms of a mental health condition. And so, um, all that to say, though, that suicide is very complex. Uh, there are ranges of factors. And while the number of people who die by suicide are high, that does not make the event very common. Um, it actually is not. Suicide is preventable, and I really would like to share with you some of those protective factors that we all can use and help others and ourselves. So for individuals, abstinence from alcohol or drugs, help-seeking behaviors, there's a having a lot of friends or at least one friend with, or a supportive significant other. Uh, as an individual, having hope for the future is very protective, as well as having goals for your life. Of course, our furry friends, our pets, our dogs, our cats, and maybe a bird. Um, having good problem-solving skills. And then, of course, also having a sense of importance of health and wellness, not just mentally, but physically as well. Within our families, certainly we want strong bonds and family cohesion. We definitely need our parents in our lives and guardians at key times. We need their presence. We also find important cultural and religious beliefs or values, the value of life, and having an ability to cope as a family is very important as well. For our community, we want to be safe. We want to have reasonable, safe, and stable environments, whether that's in public or in school or at home. Um, effective care for mental health and physical health along with counseling or at least one trusted adult in our lives, particularly for our youth. And I think I will just stop here to mention that with Debbie and Kirsten here as well and Supervisor Gore thanking the community for the ARPA money that we've received here for Cloverdale and the Mental Health Collective that we're providing mental health services. And the four organizations involved are SOS Community Counseling, the Cloverdale Senior Multipurpose Center, Alexander Valley Health, and La Familia Sana. Um, so it is our goal over the next 30 months to serve more than 200 individuals in this community and provide them with direct counseling if that's what they're seeking and needing. Um, also, of course, creating a safe environment, you know, restricting access to firearms and allowing people to have an opportunity to contribute and participate in school and in our community. Um, like I said, I know there are very, um, there are people in the room that have been touched by this. And so I just want to also reiterate Councilmember Cruz's words to connect with others, to be honest with each other about how we feel in certain circumstances by being vulnerable and gracious to others. And then one of my, um, my, I think, I wish to say my favorite survivor, Kevin Hines, says so succulently, not succulently, succinctly. Succulent's a plant. Yeah, there we go. There's the flub. I knew it was coming. He says, be here tomorrow. And I think that's very important, so I will end there. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Councilmember, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. Thank you, Becky. That was wonderful. Councilmember Cruz, thank you for reading that. It just hits home. It's just really an important topic. And I know at the Homeless Advisory Group meeting, we talked a lot about some of the different things that cause homelessness. And of course, mental health issues is top of the list. And one of the things we brought up and we talked a little bit about is the Laura's Law. It's another tool to put in the law enforcement and society's tool chest. And I did ask, and I know we're going to be writing a letter to the Board of Supervisors, and Supervisor Gore, thank you for being here so you could hear this firsthand, asking the Board of Supervisors to please consider looking at and adopting the Laura's Law. And again, there's a lot of people that think there's some pros and a lot think there may be some cons. But I look at it more as just one more tool in the tool chest to deal with people that have serious mental health problems, who really, there's no, they refuse voluntary treatment. They just absolutely refuse it. And there's nothing we can do where this gives another tool that law enforcement and mental health workers could look for to require them to get the necessary treatment. So, uh, thank you for all your work on this and hopefully, uh, there's a lot more work to be done and hopefully together we can get there. So, thank you.
And I'll take it a little bit different direction. We're looking at a crowd of people in here that are involved civically with their businesses, whatever they have. And there's enough people in this room that one of us will be the next victim or could be the next victim of suicide. Uh, we all have a story about a friend or a family member, and that's sad because Becky's word that she used was preventable. And every suicide is preventable in some, somehow, some way. And I have made sure throughout the years that I've always been available for that 4:00 AM phone call. And I have gone out and met with people. Uh, in my former job, you dealt with suicides from the other side of it. I had friends that committed, family members. My phone number's on the side of my truck. It's on the internet. It's, it's not secret. The mayor's probably the easiest person to get a hold of on his cellphone in his pocket. And as Chief knows, it's a scary thing through a lot of businesses, through law enforcement, through all first responders. And, uh, we, I mean, I even wrote an article for a newspaper here in the county regarding this. And so everyone should know, you need to be there for your friends because you might not see or know what's going on in their life. But there's something, and there's, there's demons in everyone. And we need to keep our eyes open and be there for them when they need it. Because it is just one person it'll take to keep that person from doing it. Vice Mayor, do you have anything you would like to add? Thank you. Becky, can we get a picture with you, with your proclamation?
Make it work for you. Alright, moving on. C3, a presentation by 4th District Supervisor James Gore on Cloverdale Russian River Management.
So tonight Supervisor Gore and his assistant Jen Mendoza are here to give us a full presentation. It's going to be on a lot of, touch on a lot of different topics of what's going on in our county right now, uh, starting from the past couple of years and working their way through the future. The, the mic is remote. You can take it anywhere you want. I don't know if we'll be able to see Jen through the screen here.
Mayor Lance, councilmembers, uh, to be with you in person. I, you know, I'm, I, the COVID, while still in the endemic phase and looking back on the last two and a half plus years, it's, uh, uh, it's, it's amazing to sit here with you guys after, after that time and going through the blip together. Um, you know, a lot of, a lot of pain, but also a lot of hope with all of us reconvening. And I, I say that looking up at each of you and, uh, knowing that I've had an unbelievable opportunity to work with all of you on driving progress in your own portfolios uh, and also battling through issues. I oftentimes say hell hath no fury like somebody who tries to fix something that's been a problem for a while, uh, and taking it on. And whether it was, uh, Councilmember Bagby and I with organic and solid waste and still the continual battle when we sat here eight years ago probably and worked on that uh, over to transportation and things like the First Street Bridge and Mayor Paula, past Mayor Paula, past Mayor, all of you've been mayors. Um, you know, it's been, it's, it's a pleasure to see you and your advocacy. I, I look at Marta, and it looked a little bit like Dia de los Muertos. I, uh, like when you had two colleagues with their, uh, with their flashlights as you were reading. It felt like a candlelight vigil. Uh, and I say that in a, in a beautiful way because, uh, that's what it's all about. You have the people you're with. Uh, you know, I mean, we all battle. Uh, the community screams for progress. We all try and fight for it internally. I do know that, uh, each of the five people that are on this board are, uh, I know, uh, good people with, uh, great intentions for this community and are willing to, uh, fight for that, uh, even if we don't always agree on the how. Um, you know, your advocacy and pushing me on emergency services, on Latino outreach, uh, helped make me grow and mature. And I thank you for that. I thank you for your service. I know you're finishing this year and I want to appreciate you. Um, uh, Mayor Paula, I say mayor because I, I think you've been mayor like three times since I've been elected. And I say this because you, uh, you know, you sit down with me each and every, uh, month for years and go through lists of what Cloverdale needs and how we work together. And it was never a list of, James, you have to do this. It was how do we do this together? And, um, and your advocacy led to a lot of things that some have still yet to be realized. Everything from getting, uh, the roots changed for buses on, uh, um, uh, for support of Boys and Girls Club, for after-school programs, all the way over to finally getting the funding along with, uh, SCTA and, uh, Carol Russell and Melanie for the First Street Bridge. And I say that because there's nothing I hate more than getting money and allocating it and telling people it's going to happen. And then six years later, it's still not built. I do know that that project is going out to bid this year. I know that Johannes, uh, uh, you know, uh, is now on the ball to get it delivered. So I look forward to seeing that. And I thank you. Um, Mayor Walter, I, I'm going to call all you guys mayors, um, you know. Um, I want to, um, I hope you got a note from us. I want to wish you grace and resolve and friendship and partnership to you and your family. And thank you for dedicating yourself to service. Many of you multiple, I'm servants, public servants. I say all this not to give you kudos because I don't have to. I already won my reelection. I say that jokingly, but I don't do this for politics and you don't either. I say that because you're public servants here in Cloverdale and you got a scrap. And, uh, we've scrapped together and we've done some amazing stuff. But I also want to, at the end of this, if anybody wants any updates on things like where we're at with Asti Bridge, uh, where we're at with Preston and the Parkway there, which actually links with this work because by moving into a park up there, it actually pushed a homeless population over here too and, uh, some of the management issues that we face. But, uh, um, I, there's not, I haven't done more work with another community as a county supervisor and we got a lot more to go. So, um, all that being said, uh, even though this says Cloverdale Russian River Management, I want to start by setting the stage. Uh, Jen Mendoza, uh, our, one of our field reps is going to talk about the specifics of the project. But I want to set the tone. And then I think I spoke with Mayor Lance before and allow you all to ask questions first about homelessness, uh, where we're at, what the board meeting was yesterday, anything with that. Then into the project and the next steps so that both you and the public have an opportunity to, uh, give and take so you can direct my attention. Um, even though we're saying Cloverdale Russian River Management, this is about homelessness. This is about fire. This is about parks and all about, also about river management. Vegetation, gravel, everything. So, um, we know this because, uh, for all of you, you know as well as I do that if you, uh, get beyond, um, the headlines that we read, the emails that we get, uh, there's a real issue and it's concentrated right here. And so what is the issue? You all know, I'm just stating it for, uh, to be open and transparent. It's that we have a beautiful Cloverdale River Parkway managed jointly between the City of Cloverdale and, uh, the County of Sonoma Regional Parks. And we have had a consolidation of a very, uh, permanent, uh, chronic homeless population in that area. Um, we also live in a time where mega fires have really defined the landscape in Sonoma County. Uh, you all know that on October 8th of this year, we're going to have a crazy anniversary, the five-year anniversary from the Sonoma Complex fires, the Tubbs, the Nuns, and the Pocket Fire, Kincaid two years later, Wall Bridge, Glass, all the others. But, uh, but one of the reasons that you all have stepped up with Resilient Cloverdale, the reason you've stepped up on this issue is because you also know that one of the biggest areas that has not burned in Sonoma County is right up there. Right? And so when we get those Diablo winds, those east to west blowing winds, uh, on those crazy September, October, November nights, where we have 40 mile an hour winds down on the valley floors and 90 mile an hour up in the highlands, uh, it's not a fire line. It's really an ember storm. And so everything you do, any vegetation, any fuel you can remove, any community preparedness, anything with cope leaders in the community, uh, that, um, Ms. Cummings and others, uh, work on, all the work that you do, uh, is the kind of work that led to a very different scenario with the Kincaid Fire in 2019 than with the Tubbs and the Sonoma Complex Fire in 2017. Because we were on our toes, we had loss, but we also were able to respond quickly. We're able to get people out of the way. We're able to do things. Um, this is a huge part of that, even if there was not a homeless population in this area that we had to respond to and others. This is a core area. And we all know we deal with an environmental reality that makes it very difficult to, uh, do what might seem, uh, commonsensical in terms of removing vegetation without having huge permits and five agencies involved and signing memorandums of agreement and getting work crews that are approved and making sure those work crew contracts have skilled and trained workforce and labor provisions and all these other things. I mean, we have to make sure we're not the ones who are of the system that complain about the system, but we are the ones who just break bureaucracy in itself and then we set up a new system. So with that being said, I want to go over just a couple things before we get into the actual river management project. It's, uh, yesterday at our board meeting, uh, it's appropriate, it's apropos that we're here today. Uh, homelessness was up on two different issues, okay? First thing we had is we came up and it was our point in time count. That is when the county, uh, works with all the service providers and does its best at a glance assessment of here's how many people we have who are homeless in Sonoma County, who are sheltered and unsheltered and different derivatives of that. Like you think about it, if somebody's living in their car, they're still homeless. They're still considered unsheltered, but it's not considered street homelessness, right? Um, but we have a lot of people living there in their cars. We have a lot of people in these RVs. You've seen the boulders go up from Caltrans and the county and others on the areas because it's very difficult to manage RV encampments, which is in the vehicle code, not in the actual, uh, code that we do encampment. So that's something to come. Uh, there was an article, uh, in the local paper that, uh, had a big headline that said, you know, chronic homelessness spikes. Um, that's a nice headline, but if you really read what it is, there hasn't been a survey in two years. And it was a 5% increase in homelessness, but the trend line is down 40% less than it was eight years ago. This is not all good news because it gets very difficult to manage, uh, certain populations and homelessness with high degrees of mental health, substance abuse. Um, let's just even call it out. Let's say criminal backgrounds where you can't like take somebody and put them into a, uh, um, a normal shelter kind of network when people say, I don't want to go in. I've lived here for 30, I've, even though I'm in pain, I've been here for 30 years and I refuse to go into a rule, uh, system, right? You know, these are very difficult things. But the high level is, is that the chronic homelessness- But the high level is that the chronic homelessness, it's set, it shot up by, you know, a large percent, but the, it's not a surprise because of COVID, unfortunately. It's not a surprise because of our cost of living. It's not a surprise because we live in a very low growth to zero growth community. You know. Anyways, we continue to fight. The things that we've seen, you all have seen with me, is that us putting substantial money into Project Home Key, a state program that provides 75% of the cost share. And we now have with the Caritas Village, with the Hillsburg L and M, with others, a cumulative around 500 beds that are going to be coming online with the 250 or so that were previous and what we have going now. Those areas, some are transitional housing, some are shelter networks, some are permanent supportive housing. They have the wraparound services. But what Sonoma County did for a long time, not always under our watch, but it's our responsibility now, is they played whack-a-mole with people's lives. Right? Move this encampment, push them over here, push them over here, push them over here, push them over here, offer some services. And we always had a, in the past, a housing first philosophy and policy, but we didn't have any stinking housing. So that's, that's asinine to have a philosophy like that. So we are making investments into placements. My mantra is no programs without placements. Why? Is because it's the only way people can make progress. And you know what? Doesn't matter where you choose to put a shelter, an affordable housing site, whatever. I'm not saying everywhere is right for them or everywhere is wrong for them, but you do know, just like I, that every single location is either too rural, too suburban, or too urban. People come up and say, I support these kinds of projects, but not here. Right? And it's very difficult when you look at people and their fears are real and they want to see good management and other things, but you all are the ones, just like I, who have to, who have to bring solutions to the table. Biggest issue with homelessness is I believe that everybody thinks that we're like in government or in the police is like the men in black. We can walk in with this like magical thing, hit something, make everybody forget and make this problem disappear. But the reality is, is that the solutions are in our communities and that's what I've been doing with you guys. So what did we do yesterday? We reviewed the point in time count, but we also reviewed and passed a first reading of a new camping or anti-camping ordinance. My understanding is, is that that's been brought forward to you all as well. You're going to review it. It would be great if it matches for legal purposes. We've already reviewed, there's a lot of legality around homeless management and encampment management right now. You'd and I don't need to go into Martin v. Boise, Vannucci v. Sonoma County, federal judges saying you can't move this encampment, I can move this one. That's, that's a whole tome of information. But suffice to say is that it's very difficult to manage with the current set of laws and rules what we have before us. So does that mean? Well, we passed one that is going to be very impactful for this area, for North County as an overall. Why? Because it includes, it includes a provision that says there's going to be no allowance for homeless encampments within 150 feet of the center line of a, of a, of a stream. And these are state streams, so it might not be every drainage ditch, but we have huge issues with California Department of Fish and Wildlife as well. And sometimes they have the, strange to say, that sometimes the critter and fish regulators have more authority than the police and the other folks at this time, but we do know that that's a reality. So we're looking at how that transmits. We gave direction that we would pick both the rivers and streams, but also that we would look at the FEMA flood and high level, high water marks, whichever is more restrictive. That's going to come back to us. I look forward to following up with you and seeing how it goes. So the question is, is that we have to implement that at the same time. Not the question is, is like when, how? And so I don't have full clarity at this time, but that's something that's going to come forward and we're going to have to do it. But, but it's a reality. We do know that when we created, when the Smart Train, big champion of Smart Train and transportation came in, it took away one of the biggest shelter networks in the, in the county, which were the train tracks. Right? And now we do know that rivers are not the place for it. So I am a big believer that homeless action requires a ton of service options, both options to support somebody through Health and Human Services, also through housing, but on the other side, it has to include accountability. It has to include that what do we do for these areas where it's really an intransigent problem and, and we need to do something. So that's a big deal. It's a big stinking deal and it's going to force us, force us to take accountability and squeeze. So you all are going to have to, just like, like all of us, is look at where are your options or where do we put RVs? Where do we put safe parking programs? Where do we identify opportunities to create shelters and/or outdoor shelters, navigation centers and other things? Because the only way that I, as your partner regionally, can ensure that you, that you also have solutions for a homeless population that serve your homeless population is if you come and partner with me. Right? It's no pressure. That's just, that's just the way it is. Right? At the same time, we do know that there's facilities like the Caritas Housing Project that's going in over off of 101 in Santa Rosa, is going to have 190 beds for permanent supportive housing and 90, or excuse me, 40 shelter opportunities. So we're still in a process of continuing to bring people from rural, far-off places into those facilities, but we can't always force individuals. This gets to your comment about Laura's Law. For those who don't know, Laura's Law is, is basically, if you, if you undertake it as a county, you can basically force, let's just call it force, even though it's called assisted outpatient treatment for individuals. So you can obligate somebody to go into that. It's a tough one, but I will tell you, as you all know and people here in the community know, is that if, for instance, you're like me and you know a young kid named Justin who has a rough go in Hillsburg, and there's many Justins around Sonoma County, is when he's deconstructing and basically bleeding on the corner of the plaza and he's getting his 25th 5150 and going to our crisis stabilization unit and yet we're not, we have no option other than to just release him to the street because for some reason, all of the options say that for us to take care of him also means that we have to have everything perfect and set up. After 15 years of that, when I go and knock on his dad's door, who won't even come and talk to me because he's like, I'm done, you all know that we live in a situation with a broken system. I've tried to implement Laura's Law. I haven't had the full support, but the care court provision that was enacted by Governor Newsom will usurp that. So Laura's Law, even though it's still on the books, is really, it's going to be about implementation of care court. We have until the end of 2023 as a county to fully, to get it started and implement it. We do know that one of the issues we face in this area is individuals who are victims, individuals who are vulnerable, individuals who are traumatized and individuals, not only here and around the county, who are predators. Okay? I say that because not everybody likes me to say it, but the reality is, is that it's, you have to call it the way it is. Every population has predators and victims and a whole bunch of people in between, including homelessness. And so our job is accountability and compassion. Right? So the care court, what it's going to do, even though it's not called assisted outpatient treatment, it's called court-ordered, community-based programming, same thing. Just means that we have to figure out with the district attorney, the public defender, the conservatorship leads in our Health and Human Services areas, how to implement that. So a lot of this stuff is happening, right? So there's more housing coming along, there's more shelters coming along, there's more accountability on the side of what would be called the high-needs homeless population, those who refuse to accept services. It's real difficult to make everybody happy because everybody has different opinions. My goal is to show progress with you all. And I want to start by just saying, as we go into this presentation, is this is progress. This is progress, just like the progress I forged with each of you on different bridges and different roadways and different communities. This is progress. I'm not going to overpromise, but at the end of this presentation, my goal is for you all to really go through and for us to look at how we take this to not just the next little step, but a big step. I think there is an opportunity for us in this area to not only cut down weeds, manage land, reduce fire danger, offer services, but also an opportunity for us to potentially expand this park, to manage it in perpetuity as a partnership. And I believe that there's money on the table that I can bring to bear with you all in a technical way to look at that. I can't promise it, but we've found it in the past with things like, with Paul Kahler and like way to get the open space up there built out and, and where there's a will, there's a way. You all embody that. At this time, I want to stop and just allow questions from the council on any of this before we go specifically into the project. Because when we go into the project, it's going to be pretty, it's, it's not going to be quick, but it's not going to be long. Right? It's like, here's what we've done, here's what we want to do. Let's sign an agreement about what we agree upon. Let's talk about what we don't agree upon. Let's sit down and negotiate that and let's go after some money that I can put on the table with you all and go after matching grant with Ag and Open Space. Okay? So Mayor?
No questions, but thank you for clarifying because I do know the care court, we did talk about that and I didn't realize it was going to kind of take the place and actually supersede what the Laura's Law does. So that's good to know. Thank you.
I mean, we're, we're going to do analysis to see if there's any gap that needs to be covered, but you know, I mean, you talked about it, you all, you all talked about, it's amazing that we're here with, talking about mental health, suicide prevention, all these other things. I never knew when I ran for office that I was going to be on the phone with parents who were sitting multiple times, who were telling me that there was no spot in Sonoma County that would take their kid. And then they were in Napa and they were begging for some way of this system and yet at the same time trying to keep independence and not trying to M their kid, but after going through hell and back, not having any option for services. Right? And so there's a weird thing here with the law about the level that it takes to deem somebody disabled and, but I, this is why it's outpatient. Right? This is why it's outpatient patient. It's not, not trying to condemn people to an asylum. You know, anyways, but you all know too, I mean, the reason we're in this place is because the state and others deconstructed the entire support system. That's why the Sonoma Developmental Center with 1,000 patients went away. Right? That's why others, North Bay Regional Center, all these other places did it. They thought it was going to get taken care of in community. Obviously, you know, is just kind of pushed homelessness around for 20 to 30 years. So anybody?
Vice Mayor, have his hand up at all? I can't, I can't see him.
I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Gore, we met for the first time less than two years ago and I'm not the most articulate person, but I came to you and I said, I'm here for solutions. And so if we have a problem, I want solutions. And you have stepped up to the plate more than any politician I've, I've seen. And that's what my worry was, is you know, you want to put in a stoplight, it's going to take five years. You want to paint a curb, it's going to take two years. Look at what we've done in two years. This is amazing. And there's a lot of problems that we've had to handle and what you're going to present shows a lot of resiliency and compassion at the same time and resolve solutions. And I love it. So thank you for being here and thank you.
Well, thank you for, for, I mean, it's all about what, what's next. There's no confetti. There's no rose petals to throw out and say we did it. There's no, I mean, who cares? You guys know, I just got reelected and the very next morning after I got reelected, I had to go to court for four hours and have a guy who threatened my family cross-examine me for three or four hours, you know, for the glory of being a locally elected official. Right? So, so we do this for the right reasons. I do want to ask if Michael Gauss is on our call and I would love, Michael, if you could fill in anything that I might have missed. And I appreciate you. I know you're working your tail off and I didn't want to keep you too long, but I just wanted to see if you had anything to add, if you're here.
Thanks, Supervisor. Thank you, the mayor. Good to, good to. Good to be here virtually. We had another public meeting go till five. I think two minutes before, so I'm pretty well, I just want to point out that the, maybe I should, maybe I should, can folks hear me okay? Hear me okay?
Yep. Got you.
Just want to point out the homeless count overall, the, you know, that was presented yesterday in the Board of Supervisors and this afternoon to the Continue of Care Board is available online on our website. I'll make sure to get that to Jen to send out if folks don't have it. I, you know, I want to point out that the count, as we all know, is imperfect. It's imperfect science. It's our best guess, it's one night out of the year, but the 5% increase this year while, you know, while noteworthy, was likely mitigated due to all the efforts, you know, from the state, the federal government, the local jurisdictions and COVID response. So grateful, grateful for all that. And in particular, in Deaf County, we saw it's like decreasing Cloverdale and a little increase in Giltrug and decrease in incorporated areas. So overall, a decrease in Orange County, lots more work to do, but I think the partnerships with the Supervisor's Office, my office, Department of Public Health have great work on the Cloverdale Task Force and the great nonprofits and community members is really paying off. And happy to answer any questions about, you know, the overall account or anything like that.
Thank you, Michael. Janice, you want to jump right in and go for it?
Yeah, yeah. And what I'd like to do, can we get back to the presentation? Thank you, Michael. I think we're, I think we're good. I know you got kids, you can.
I'll hang, I'll hang for a bit.
Okay. So Jen, maybe you can join me. We'll start off with the first slide and then I'll pass it over to Jen right afterwards. You know, I mean, you said I've done something. I really haven't. It's really been Jen doing the work on the ground. You know, we all get too busy to follow up with everything. As I said, the amount of regulatory bodies and others that do this. And I want to just start off by saying thank you for your patience because the only way I've ever gotten anything done with you all is because you've put pressure on me. And I mean that, I thank you for that. I like the letters. I like the sit-down conversations. I like the critical and hard conversations about what's your intent? What are you trying to do? Why haven't you showed up here? Why haven't you done that? Because I, I'll invoke Carol Russell, a former council member who said, from New York, you know, some of you are just too nice to get anything done around here. And it's very true. It's very true because they don't want to say what's really happening. They don't want to express their frustration. You don't need to do that as a jerk, but you do need to bring it up and like give voice to the ground truth that's out there. So can we go to the first slide, please? So this is where, you know, we just go as a high level. Yeah, we've put 120,000 in conjunction towards this project, was able to secure for the Board of Supervisors about $100,000 in vegetation management funds. We used actually, I don't have a big budget, but was able to scrape some of the budget like instead of, because, because we hadn't hired somebody to put towards this project, about 20, 30,000 the initial year. Jen and I talked about this, she'll get into it with the supervised adult crews and then later Northern Sonoma County Fire Vegetation Management crews, but you got to have some skin to put into the game. But we heard loud and clear from you all and from the community that there was something going on here that needed direct attention. And by focusing on fire and safety and also homeless services and other things, it was an absolute place where we could bring in Health and Human Services, we could bring in our ecologists and our other work and our fire marshals and we could like create those partnerships that, as you guys know, don't get done because of bureaucracy and because of limitations on that. The only other thing I'll say is, is that, you know, we've talked about it before, you all know that we were able to secure not only our local money, but I was able to get our folks to write a grant application to, for the Parks Bond. So we got an awesome parkway going in over at Preston. You know, I, I didn't do it because I grew up on that hill. Right? I don't need, I, I just want you to know, you know, like some of this stuff is very close to home. But, but I, you know, that's going to be a potential area for campsites for others, but you all know what was going on there. I had Jen on my team and another folk, person on our team at one point looked to go down there with the Parks folks and the sheriff deputies came up and said, we don't want you to go down there. And I'm not trying to, you know, I'm not trying to paint a horrible picture, but this is the reality. They said, we have five or six people down there that are really tough. Right? It's not safe for you to go down there. Okay? And so, but we did go in with Parks. We did go in and notice and, and we did go in and we put up boulders in that area for the RV parking with you guys and others, even though it's a little different when you flop over to Mendocino County Line and others. And we have done what I call imperfect relentless progress, which is us getting busy and, and even if it, you know, causes issues in the short term. But you all know that that did push some of this population into services, number one, and others to come down further into the river where there was a community down here. I want to, also, I'm just going to And we have done what I call imperfect relentless progress, which is us getting busy. And even if it, you know, causes issues in the short term. But you all know that that did push some of this population into services, number one, and others to come down further into the river where there was a community down here. I want to, also, I'm just going to stop and thank everybody in this community who hosts the food pantries, who does the feeding programs, who does it for individuals. You know, I see compassion in spades here in this community, but we also have to deal with the reality on the ground. So Jen, I'm going to pass it over.
All right. So I'm Jen Mendoza, and I am one of the field representatives in Supervisor Gore's office. I am the self-anointed bureaucracy princess, because I get given orders to things, and then I go to, you know, county council or whoever, and they say, please don't do that. And then I have to figure out a way around it. I'm so short. Oh, no. Okay. All right. Okay. So, oh, gosh. So, the, so basically, what we're doing here is we have the kind of an outline of what the process looked like. So anytime you do anything having to do with water, it's super, super highly regulated. It's incredibly, it's incredibly onerous to get it permitted. It's usually a many-year, very expensive process. And so then Vice Mayor Lands came to us and said, hey, could we get some vegetation management out there? And we said, yes. And then we said, okay, now how the heck are we going to do this in any sort of way that's going to make sense? So we went to Russian Riverkeeper and we said, hey, you guys know what the rules are. Can you tell us how to do this? And so Russian Riverkeeper said, yeah, you need to get the regulators out there. So we got a whole big crew together, and we got, you know, we had Todd Lands, we had Marta Cruz, we had Reach for Home, we had the Sheriff's Office, we had Hector out there. We had the whole, everybody showed up, this group of like 20 people to go walk the river with the regulators and to kind of go through it. And so we had cowfish and wildlife out there, and we had the State Water Quality Control Board out there. And so we went and we walked the river and went through a lot of what we can do and what we can't do. And so we kind of got it quick and dirty, like what can we get done as quickly as possible and as safely as possible without having to go through a full environmental impact report process? So we went through and did that. And the whole process started, I want to say, in probably maybe May or June of 2021. And we went through the process of trying to get, once we figured out what we can and can't do, Russian Riverkeeper offered a biologist. So we can't just go out there and start cutting stuff. We have to have somebody tell us what we can and can't cut, because average field crews don't know what's endangered or not endangered, or what we need to protect. So we went through that process. David Kelly had to write up best management practices. So this is the easy way out. This is the less bureaucratic method, right? So then we, then we had to go get somebody to do it. And so with the budget that we had to work with, we used the supervised adult crews through the probation department. And so these are folks that, you know, they have a minor, minor thing that they get charged with, and they do time, basically, so that they don't have to go to jail. And so they came out, and we had to walk with their crews. So we've got the whole crew back out there to go walk with, with the supervisors for that group. And then we had to kind of walk through like what they can and can't do. So there are certain things that people who are mandated to be there, you cannot tell them to go cut poison oak, for example, or other things that could be dangerous for them. So we went through and did that process. And so we got all this put together and got the okay. David Kelly got the best management practices out. So it took us about, I want to say July, before we were able to really start doing work, maybe even August. It was, it was late in the summer. So we got going, and we got a section done, and then the rain came super early, and that was it for last year. So having learned what we did with that, we came back at it a lot earlier this year. One of the things that we don't realize is that you can't just go out with a weed backer and go do it, right? There are certain times of the year that we can go out and do the work, because birds have babies, right? And they need their protections, that we're not cutting down their trees when they're trying to nest. So we have things like that that we need to be mindful of. And so, and so we got everything kind of set up and rolling. We brought in the Northern Sonoma County Fire District this year. They were able to get a lot of work done. They already have their own equipment and kind of moved through it really quickly and that sort of thing. So we brought them in this year, and we were actually able to start working in July with special permission, because there were nesting birds still, to have the biologist go out there and basically scope the area and make sure that, that we didn't get too close to a place where nests would be. So there's a lot to it. And it seems, a lot of times when you're kind of going through that process, like, like you're not doing anything, right? And that's one of the hardest parts about our job, is that we feel like we're always, we don't feel like it, we are always working on this progress, but until you get to the point where there's a result, you don't really want to talk about it a whole lot because of all of these little steps. Every single one of those little steps could have resulted in not having the project go forward, right? So, so that was basically the vegetation management part. We, we've completed that. So basically, everything that we could do legally without a permit in the public right-of-way, and then with private donations in the private areas, we have done. There is some, there's still some stuff that needs to be chipped, but it will be completed in the next couple of weeks. So we've done the major vegetation management. Next slide.
Jen, before you go, on that slide, I'd like to talk a little bit about the photo in it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
So this photo was recent, after the very first time Jen and I got to work together. And I think I scared her the first time I met her, because where this tractor is, was about 40 yards of trash from a gentleman that lives in town with a mental health issue. And he had taken over this part of the bridge and undermined it so bad that the bridge was going to fail. And this is Transportation and Public Works coming in here to put the rocks in place after we removed his dumpster full of trash, because the bridge is going to be shut down because of what he was doing to it. So the work that Jen pushed through got this done right away to keep our bridge across the river, basically, and save us. There's more to it than just trying to get people help and move them out. It's also destruction of property like this, which could, you know, hinder our entire town. So they placed these rocks here to keep people from being able to climb under and undermine the bridge. Sorry.
Okay, so we touched on this quite a bit already tonight, but one of the things I wanted to talk about with homelessness and this project wasn't so much, yes, we need to move them and get them services and things like that, but it's also the process of kind of this dance with the homeless populations. So a lot of folks are traumatized on the river. This, that's where they live. And we came in and we removed vegetation from their home, right? And so that was a very traumatizing thing for some people. We did, we did have to move people, you know, out of the way so that we could work. We did have to move people from spots where they were causing structural damage. There's a spot over on Levy Road now that has some pretty significant damage that we're going to have to look at, that had an encampment. So, so there's a lot of that, and it, there's, it's, it's, it's a hard, it's a hard kind of thing to work around, partly because on one hand, you have compassion, you understand how scary that is for some of these folks, and you understand that, you know, when you go clean the homeless garbage out of the river, that's their stuff. Like, I have a house to hold my stuff, they don't have a house to hold their stuff, right? So we have this situation where we very much want to protect the river, we very much want to continue this work, but we also have to realize that we are looking at it from a totally different perspective than the people living out there, right? That said, there's some pretty unsavory stuff that's also been happening out there. So one of the things that we had found is that every time we'd clean a section up with our vegetation management and our river cleanup and stuff, the next section over would catch fire, right? So we were, we were finding that, 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 some of that activity was acting out in response, or we believe it was. But also too, there, there were other concerns out there. You know, I've felt unsafe out there, being by myself, you know? There's, there's some pretty, pretty scary stuff that goes on sometimes, too. And I'm not going to get into that, but, but it's just, the process is very clunky. It's not perfect. And so, so that's kind of what we've been working with. Next slide. So we've had a lot of really good things come out of this, right? So it's not just doom and gloom and, and people suffering with homelessness and things like that. And we've had, basically, this, this project management system that we came up with in Cloverdale has now been repeated along the Russian River. Russian Riverkeeper is managing a group called Resilience Force and has done vegetation management in Geyserville, Hillsburg, and some of Mark West Creek in our district. The, this has really brought a lot of different jurisdictions together. These river walks that we've done have created, have recreated bonds with these different organizations. So now anytime I have somebody throwing something in the river, I call up my buddy over at the waterboards, hey, we have this going on. When we have somebody having crisis, I call up my buddy at the heart team, right? And so we have these different sort of relationships that we've built that should make it easier to kind of go forward with these, these things that we're doing. We also have basically created with this, in law enforcement, well, with the Sheriff's Department specifically, kind of a more robust conversation. We don't necessarily interact a whole lot with the Sheriff's Department or these other departments, right? It's, you know, we're kind of in our silos, and this has given us an opportunity to forge those relationships. So that's, that's been a positive. Next slide. All right.
Thank you, Jen. I want to, so next steps. So the first thing is that we talked about the camping ordinance a little bit earlier, and you guys are going to be reviewing that. And implementing that appropriately is, is, as we've talked about, it's, it's this world of accountability and compassion and driving people towards services and offering opportunities. And at the same time, identifying clear areas where, where, where it's, it's not going to be okay to have encampments. It's not just areas within the water structure, it's also our public areas. If you look at the ordinance that we passed, it also has areas where it's like, okay, all public land, really, individuals have a right to sleep. So how do we provide and honor that? Because, you know, what was happening is people were just being running, running around and running around and jammed out. But it's also identifies like kind of clear areas that we need to keep open for right-of-ways and other things like that. But I'll tell you, the biggest thing about this is it's a tough, it's a tough conversation to have, because there's always somebody who says, well, you're not doing enough compassionately. And then there's somebody who says, there's not enough accountability you're holding. And we're pushing the bar on both of those, right? And, and the crazy thing, as you all know, is that we could do this kind of presentation for a bunch of other initiatives that we did. So I hope you'll have us back if there's anything else we want to do, because all of this stuff that I'm talking about, that Jen has talked about, that, that Mayor Lands, with you all, with city manager, with our office have done, it really doesn't matter unless we do more. And I say that because I don't know if there's anybody in this room who's written us a note that is horribly frustrated and is fearful about the fires that have happened, where they live, what's going on. But I, as opposed to cringe at that, I want to honor their fear, want to honor the angst and like, you know, the fact that we live in a community that we have continually been under duress, and we have a lot of work to do. But so what's next? So the first thing is, is that for me, with you all, is we had a conversation, you know, conversations only happen when you get out and take a walk. I'd love to take walks with you guys. We kind of looked at this and we said, okay, well, this is nice, but it's all going to grow back. So I was able to secure some funding this year from, for, for specific transportation parks, infrastructure projects. And as the chair, we split that between our districts. And so I, I am, without promising, I'm committing that some of these funds will be used towards this project, and we have to scope this out. But the goal number one is that we take these areas that are hard to manage, where we've done veg management, and we do. And a lot of this comes from Mayor Lands and the other folks that have been there and like, okay, well, let's treat it now, let's maybe figure out the contour of the system so we can run mowers over it in the future. So we don't have to like hire, spend $120,000 every three or four years, because vegetation is going to come back, right? How we set up this terrain appropriately, if we have to do environmental review, fine. But let's do this, and then maybe come up with some kind of a, you know, an agreement between the city and the county on how this is managed, and what's the cost share, and how we do that. It's worth it for us to get something written down so that we don't just, all of a sudden we're all active on these issues, whether it's equity issues, whether it's transportation issues, you know, whatever it is, or in this case, like land management issues and population, and then we get busy and then we get complacent. And so all of a sudden, we're, you know, we're retired here and pissed that nobody kept it going. The third thing, though, is that this area of park, this is kind of a crazy example about something that maybe was, is, we've started acting on it because of a blight issue and a difficult issue and a, and a, and transigent issue that we're improving upon. But through this process, you know, there's been at least two, if not more, parcels identified to the north and the south that could be added to it to expand the river park and make it a much better system. And so, you know, you always go, okay, well, will this gravel company give it to us for free? If we do that, will Parks take it over? Okay, well, will this person sell it to us for whatever area? So this is me just pitching to you an idea, right? Is that I know, I have it on good authority, that our Ag and Open Spaces matching grants program has only two applications in it, and that it is going to close, but it's going to stay open for rolling applications at our direction from the board. It's very clear about that, that we're not going to shut this down. There's a lot of bureaucracy involved with this, this program. There's a lot of people who don't like to write grants, because, and we're doing a reform of that, but at this time, I'm, I'm committed to still go after it. So this is a strange thing, because some would call it, this isn't, even though I'm on the board of the Ag and Open Spaces District, I also have county funding. And so what I'm trying to consider is if we can partner with some of the funding that I've allocated through the general fund with you all, technical assistance and others, bring Parks and others and put in a grant together that might leverage some of that funding. It's not a conflict of interest, because I don't get to choose that project. And I could even recuse myself from the approval at the end of the day. But I'm not willing to let the fear of progress being made or somebody saying something stop me from pursuing something with you. So I'd recuse myself if necessary from all those deliberations, but I have it on good authority that, that we could potentially figure something out. So even if that means you all with limited resources, if we need to look at getting a consultant that can help things out, I understand how it works up here. You all are entrepreneurs. So a lot of work to do, but that's our story. We're just committed to go forward, and, and I look forward to hearing questions in the public. I'm sorry to folks if they've been waiting for an hour to speak. Going to sit here as long as, as needed to hear you out, and appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Who wants to go first? Congressman Bagby?
Well, just a couple of quick comments. First of all, thank you so much. Not, not, I mean, this is just one example of many things that you've worked on up in the North County. That's been very, very helpful to, to our city and our residents. There, there's a lot of work to be done, and you mentioned laws and different things that we're doing, but what people really need to understand is, we're trying to work around new laws that are being developed by courts that are basically taking away some of the legislative laws that we have on the books. So what we think, people constantly say, why don't you pass a law to prevent that? The reality is, we had laws to prevent it, they've been thrown out by the courts, so now we're reactive. And when you're reactive, you had to, you got to figure it out, go through these steps, and you have a lot of problems, because most of these things take funds, and funds are limited. And especially in a little town like Cloverdale, we're on a very tight budget, just to provide basic services. So this is really a challenge. So again, I want to commend you and your staff. Been excellent to work with you. And, you know, and I also want to thank you, just something I want to put out before we get into questions, is there's so many other projects, and one, most recently this year, our swimming pool here in town would not have opened had you not stepped up, you and your team, because we, it was not getting permitted, because there is a lot of old plumbing that needed to be replaced, which basically required them to tear the whole infrastructure of the pool out. And not only did you step up, but you stepped And not only did you step up, but you stepped up quickly. The funds were approved by the county, and this pool opened on time for the 2022 swim season for our residents and the entire North County. A big, over $600,000 commitment the county made to make that happen. And I got to just share that because people need to understand, those are big deals, but yet you do step up and the money came. And I want to personally thank you for that, and I know our city really appreciates it. Another issue is a recent thing. I've been in touch with your office regarding what I felt was a delay in permitting of a new business, trying to open a restaurant. And Jen, you're a jewel. You stepped up, and within two days, they heard from the permitting, and it's moving forward now, back on schedule. Thank you for that. Those are the kinds of things we run into problems. But working in collaboration with you and the county and your team has been so successful over the years, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's crazy that all of those things that you talked about, and a lot, including potholes and all these other things, are things that really are common sense, and they're expected out of your government. And it's not like, you know, I have a two-plus-billion-dollar budget. If I can't do vegetation management with you guys, what are we doing? But it is crazy that that is difficult to do. I can't partner with you on a sponsorship for a Cesar Chavez Day or something if I choose to hide behind it. So just keep up the pressure because you know, I like, it's, you got to turn the heat up in the room to make common sense happen.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really have any question. I just want to give Supervisor Gore a big thank you for finally giving something that I think we need to come, you think, to and get a handle on the homeless situation. And city staff, Mr. Mayor, thank you for all of your hard work on that. Just a comment, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Supervisor Gore, you know, it's very important that you're here and that we're also addressing the issue of resiliency that has so very many ramifications. Of course, you know, the river management is one of them. But, you know, people forget, and I will never forget how your office came through to start emergency preparedness with Nuestra Comunidad. That was the very first effort that took place here, and that's how Resilient Cloverdale came about to be what it is today. It was the partnership of your office, our District Four, and thanks to City Manager Initiative, to go ahead and bring Alma Bowen to everywhere. And our participation and the participation of the community was so low after the fires. Wow, what a response. It became real. Everything that Alma talked about and everything that Nuestra Comunidad presented to Cloverdale became a reality. And I just have to say thank you because you were the root force for us to have Resilient Cloverdale and Clover ready today. That is the most important part for us to be able to cope with the dangers that we face every year when it comes to fires. So once again, thank you for very many other things. And Councilmember Paula forgot about the pool. I mean, you know, it finally got going, and then we got the pandemia. So I also want to thank everybody in the office because it was because of your office that we were able to have the first testing and the first vaccination for COVID-19 here in Cloverdale. Thank you for the partnership with the Health Department and the county.
Love that we're doing all this thank you and thank you, but the reality is, is that, like I said at the beginning, all of these conversations were pretty fiery. Like, James, what the hell? When are you going to get a testing up here? Like, that's how stuff gets done. Like, hey, you know, what the, you know, look at what I'm dealing with. Hey, you know, our pool is going down. We're not going to be able to kids. Hey, you know, safe heights of schools, you know, what the heck? Well, I remember my first one was, when are you going to get, you know, our organics? Organics! But I mean this, is that I appreciate, I appreciate you talking about the successes. We have a, we have a lot of things that we have not done. And my, I just looked at myself and I'm like, how old have I gotten in the last eight years working with you all? Look at how gray I am.
Looked bad for 29, right?
Anyways. Anything else? Public comment or? I just want to make sure I'm...
Yeah, I'll just say thank you, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, probably it's after, probably some yelling and screaming. So thank you for your patience and your indulgence a lot of times. Because I think that we get, we get excited about things because we care so deeply. And I never have any doubt, you know, you're always going to, you're never going to completely agree with anybody. But there's one thing that I know for sure, and is that is you care. And when I call your office, I'm going to get a response. And so I, that, to me, it just shows the level of commitment. And things have been really hairy. I mean, you know, we thought the fire, we thought getting through the fires was going to be, you know, well, and we get through the fires, that's, things are going to be a lot better. And then we really got sucked with COVID, and it was kind of, you know, in those times when those relationships are forged. So we know that, you know, yeah, we may not agree on how to best accomplish something, but we, we all know that we care. So I do appreciate you and your, and your office very much. With that said, I just kind of want to get back to the river park and kind of its place in North County and Cloverdale a little bit because that's, that is what we're talking about today, and that's what we're focusing on. You know, I, I know that you know, we have so much untapped potential here for providing amenities for residents and for tourism. The river park is just one jewel in that crown. Port of Hill Creek and hopefully other properties that will be coming online soon will be part of that. The other big, I think the thing that has a potential to really benefit the river park, and it's also, you know, it's kind of a catalyst for change, is the Smart Trail, also known as Great Redwood Trail. And so I think it's going to be really important, and this is something that I've talked with staff with, talk about beating people over the head, I've probably been beating them over the head about this, but there is really a need for a North County Parks Master Plan. And the reason I say North County and not Cloverdale is that so many of the amenities will be located in Cloverdale and part of our jurisdiction, but the complementary amenities like the Preston property, the other piece of the river park, all of those, the places where we share, it's going to be so important that Smart and Great Redwood Trail staff and city staff and county staff and county park staff are really on the same page. And when you say, you know, technical resources, I don't know if that's going to be, you know, writing a grant together to go after master planning funding. I don't expect the county to pay for the North County Parks Master Plan. We're going to have to take up some of the, take some of the responsibility as well with our partners, but that's something that we need to work toward and creating a partnership because it's going to be so important that we're on the same page with Great Redwood Trail and Smart. And of course, you know, one of the technical, the technical, not me, sorry. One of the challenges is really going to be the fact that Smart has jurisdiction all the way up to the Mendocino border, to the county border. And so depending on where the Great Redwood Trail track, if it's, in my mind, it starts, you know, just north of the train station, but the fact is, is that Smart may need to use some of that rail track to get to the, to get to the buildings that they have already there for operations. So they may need some additional track. And I think that's going to be really key in all of us working together to make sure that, that the intersection of First Street and Asti Road and then the intersection at Cloverdale, at Citrus Fair and Asti Road really comes together, not half-assed. Sorry, sorry, buddy, but yeah, it's got to be full-assed. Absolutely. That's what, because we deserve that as a community. And it's kind of one of those things that in, like so many other areas in Sonoma County and so many other rural cities, we have roads that are turning into neighborhoods and are turning into park amenities. They need to be safe for bicycles, they need to be safe for walkers, they need to be safe for hikers. The other thing that I brought up at a recent Great Redwood Trail meeting, and we met the consultants for the first time, who were going to run the trail planning from Mendocino all the way to Humboldt, and I really pushed them to make sure that they're including, you know, Sonoma County folks, Sonoma County Tourism, Sonoma County, the, so folks who are really interested in the trail all the way from Marin to Humboldt, that we get everybody included, even though they're, right now, their mission is Mendo to Humboldt. I said, you know, I'm just going to mention the elephant in the room. It's like, we have what could be potentially one of, a great economic driver for our entire region. Nobody wants to see what happened on the Joe Redota Trail again. And I just, and I said, and I'm not saying that because I want to stop the progress, but that's the thing, is that we have to come to terms with our failures. We failed so, our community, our society failed in so many ways. But we can't let the, the potential risks get in the way of what can be an incredible amenity for our community. So I just want to, I just, I know that that is something that is coming down, staring at me, I'm staring at the light in the tunnel, thinking, oh, God, is that the train or is that the rescue crew? I'm looking at that, and I know that we have to take that on. We have to take it on head-on. Because all of these amenities, the river park, the Preston Park, for lack of a, because we don't have a name yet, all these other things have so much potential, but we have to be realistic about where we've gotten it wrong in the past. And so that's just, that's where I'm going to challenge you, is work with us on that.
Well, I love the way you're thinking because you're, I mean, a vision of improving, well, the vision of improving a river park came out of dealing with veg management and increasing homeless services and management. Now we're talking about, like you say, is how do we really link the airport, River Park, Preston, Great Redwood Trail, you know, between the, I mean, I don't think I've seen really like a master plan put down that really links county and city things up in that way. And as we know, we'd be, you know, if you don't have that plan, then you can't go after funding, you can't go, you can't compete well. And this is very helpful.
We have the Sonoma County Parks, I think it's like a strategic master plan. And I don't know of any other areas in Sonoma County they could exist, but I think that just given the nature of the corridor, we would really benefit from a master plan so that we can all go after the kind of infrastructure funding that we're, we're going to need, so.
Well, you know, the other thing is, is that we're, and I mentioned this before, is that we're, you know, we've made substantial strides on the, on making Asti Bridge a reality, and that includes another, you know, we're talking about trails, but we're also talking about water trails. Preston, Riverfront, public access at Asti, underneath the Geyserville Bridge, we have a partnership with the Dry Creek Rancheria down below the casino. They also have that campground there. You know, the whole goal has also been to, been to create a water trail, well, first it has to rain. But, but I really like this. This is, this is exactly what we need to do. We need to not just find pearls, but we need to, like, plot our path. Thank you. That's great.
Well, thank you. And I just had one follow-up thing I just wanted to mention. First of all, I want to congratulate the Board of Supervisors and yourself on the 2.5 million grant that's going out for the behavioral health mobile crisis teams in four cities. And I guess I would like to encourage that we take a look at how we expand that, especially to the North County. And is there, to your knowledge, is there a plan to look into expanding that program? Because it states clearly, and it's so accurate, law enforcement is really not equipped to respond to behavioral health problems. They do, that's the first person on the scene, but they really need that backup support of the mental health professionals. And so I just wanted to see what's, what's your thoughts on that?
So this is where we're getting to make sure that the reality on the ground fits the policies and the funding, because I was able to get the funding to have the behavioral or the mobile support teams go all the way to the Mendocino County line, right? So maybe, you know, I think this, this goes to a deeper, you know, issue, which is sometimes there are services and people don't know they're there. If you guys don't know they're there, then you're not getting, I mean, you're the ones who get the calls. You know, one thing that I would be very happy to do, even if it's like towards the end of the year or whatever, if you guys want to engendize something, if you want to do it during the day, if you want to figure out a time, I mean, we don't have to hide from the Brown Act and hide from public meetings if you want to do a retreat, need to bring different department heads here. I mean, we got, I know the folks from Alexander Valley Healthcare, I mean, we've been talking for a long time about having health services and human services create a county center. You know, Marta, not only you, but Joe beforehand, we actually got pretty close to, you know, creating an office here, but then there were, you know, it's like one of those things, it was just too expensive in the end, but the goal was always to create an investment. So I mean, we need to really figure these things out. It'd be good to put together with you guys a list, like the Vet Center, you know, the Health Clinic, you know, in Times Square, like the, because, once again, usually my authority is out in the unincorporated areas, but with Health and Human Services, it's every constituent. So that just, you know, I mean, and we're talking about this, like, like really a master plan for this connectivity of this trail is not just expanding one park. No, also, you guys, we're working together, there's some excitement about some of our, the potential for that mitigation property through Ag and Open Space. And there's a couple other things on the play. But I, like, I could set up something where I came in and offered you guys an opportunity to turn this around to just have my different department heads come up here and talk about their things and give direction or whatever. I'd be happy to do that. So we don't have to just play the game of telephone, which is you trying to get on my, me, then me calling them and sending them an email, then having them set...
Supervisor, I'm going to just make a couple of comments and ask a couple of questions. My thought process is kind of like trails, they kind of go every direction because there's so much we're kind of throwing at everyone right now. A lot of different projects, a lot of different things we've done, but they all have the same ultimate goal in the end, and that's community, whether it's the compassion for the homeless population or for the people that are living in the town that are worried about their houses and being safe. There was 86 fires that our fire department had responded to when I came on to council in two years, and they were all on the riverbed. That's what prompted this, is nothing was being done and our population was basically lighting the edge of our town on fire, begging for something bad to happen. Because of the work that you, you helped facilitate and basically helped make happen with all the money, you know, this has been stopped. And we saw that today, or this year firsthand, when you and I went out to the river park and we stood at the edge where we had been doing the vegetation management, and one of our homeless population decided to light it on fire to get back at us, acting out. And the fire stopped at our vegetation management line, and the fire chief came and said, if that wasn't there, we wouldn't have Vista View. And he said, if the guy had done it a month later when we had windy conditions, we wouldn't have that part of Cloverdale. So because of what you're doing here and helping us push through, you're saving Cloverdale. And that is, that's why I got on council, was to protect our community and make our community safe, and not just in this direction, but in many directions. And, you know, we talked about how we're looking for this to look in the future, and we talk about equity. Free park is equity. We're going to create, or talked about, creating spots to enjoy the river for people to go down. It's free. It's a beautiful thing. You bring more people down, the more public down there. It creates a great swimming holes, it creates great places to barbecue with your family and hang out. It also polices itself. When you have more people in the public down there, you don't have people that are able to do bad things so easily. One of the problems that we've encountered throughout this is the service resistant, as you call them, the people that do not want help or can't get the help. We have reached for home down here at least once a week, usually twice. We all know every single homeless person in our area by first-name basis. You experienced that with me as you actually joined me in some of these homeless camps and spoke with people. We have people that go from simple assault charges to very violent felonies that aren't allowed into these homes. allowed into these homes. What are we going to do, or what are you going to do, to help these people that can't get the help, that can't, they want housing, but they can't get it? That's, that's kind of my, my next step proposition, or the tough question I have for you, is what can we do together to find these people an answer?
So of our jail population, our average daily population in the jail, 40% is homeless and 50% are self-diagnosed with, or not self-diagnosed or by the system with, mental health issues. Half of that 50%, so a quarter of our jail population has mental health issues to the point that requires direct intervention, right? And let's just say that those are words the system uses to manage, and say like, you know, it's tough, it's a tough situation. So our jail, and this is not unique, this is across the United States, right? So our jails sitting here at, and not to get into, I mean, we're talking about people's lives, but at the same time, if what we're looking at is, you know, 250 bucks a night in a jail, that's somewhat out of sight, out of mind for people in the community, that, you know, like, we've had some folks like that, just say, go, go pick those folks up and throw them in jail, right? We've decriminalized at the state level drugs, drug use, personal use, even, even drugs at a level that were narcotics and other things. Like, I try to shut down drug houses, and folks are back on the street before the, before the sheriff deputies finish doing the paperwork, right? So what does that mean? I'll say in one degree, is this care court provides a tool that is going to start a lot of action and make it, like we usually say, is that if you really deal with a tough issue, it gets worse before it gets better, right? It starts to squeeze a situation. And so this idea of directed assistance, outpatient, whatever the heck that, however that looks, that's going to be a game changer for us. So implementing that in partnership with you all is going to be, I think, the key thing for us to take a step in this direction. On the other side, what am I looking at? Well, I mean, like, for me, I really think about Sonoma County. I think about, like, the fact that we really, it's very hard to build housing, and it's very hard to build affordable housing, it's expensive everywhere we live, so we can't just grow our way out of that. We don't live in a, a community that's going to be the Jetsons in 20 years, right? So there's, there's some tough things that we need to deal with. The fact that, like, we need more safe parking areas, we need more RV encampments, we need more, even for workforce, areas that have not permanent housing. Yesterday in the afternoon, we, in our building code for accessory dwelling units and other units, not full residential units, approved people being able to build those with compost toilets. We approved for there to be Holden Hall. I never knew how much I was going to legislate poop when I ran for this job, you know, AKA effluent, but, you know, I mean, that's for farm worker, you know, units, you know, that are restricted, so you can't do them for vacation rentals. I mean, come on, look at this, look at the level of detail and, AKA, you know, malarkey is a nice word, that we have to deal with to achieve progress. But, but I will say that, you know, I mean, the fight is real, the trench work is needed. And so, you know, here we go. So I just really feel like every time I come here, I get a new list of to-dos, and I like to-dos. And so as much as you're saying, like, thank you, I really have to say thanks to Jen, I go back and say, thank you guys for holding my feet to the fire, but like, you know, I mean, let's just keep going. I just want to keep going. So I'd love to build a master plan together, I'd love to build, you know, these other things. I actually was able to skittle away enough money to earn budget, to put some money towards some projects in my district. If Johannes Holberts, who lives here with you, is listening to this presentation, he might be a little nervous, because the amount that's going to, like, transportation and bridges is slowly going away, and the amount that's going towards parks, and River Park specifically, is increasing. So, but I like that stress. So, that's the best I can say, is that, you know, good work begets more good work. So if we do a good thing here, we're just going to find five more things that are screwed up. So, you know, let's, let's plan it together. You guys do your planning, then I do my, I'm in my planning with the county, you know, and then we try to get together and figure it out. Whenever you want to do a day or a two-day, you know, workshop, and get this, get this real, I'd love to do it. Okay?
Great. You guys might have to open up the public. Anyone in the public want to make any comments, questions? Seeing none there. Anyone on the attendees list? I see none there. Anything? Bring it back. James, I just want to thank you for everything you've been doing. And Jen, Jen, the right arm of, of you, she is, she takes the hard questions from me all the time. She's had to take the hard hikes with me. She's learned more about homeless camps than she probably ever thought, and as you said, the human feces, the five-gallon buckets of it at a time, that she's had to be exposed to. It's a new experience for everyone. And thank her for being a trooper, and being willing to go in there and find my batteries.
If I may, just one other thing I just need, I need to, I need to say, is that, you know, my board, the reason I'm the chair this year is because there was a lot of angst last year with redistricting, right? I was going to be the chair the next year. I came in for two reasons. One is because maybe some on my board see me as like a peacemaker, but at the same time, it's kind of a, let's stop the shit, right? Like, let's vote, let's do whatever. And all of us as public servants deal with a crazy amount of angst right now. And a lot of it is real, because people are very fearful. And that's, I have to think about this, just like you all do. But the level of outrage, and the level of heat, and the level of vitriol that comes into your email boxes, and mine, it mandates us to take action, but at the same time, it really makes you check and wonder if you should be doing local public service. And so at the same time, it's a lot of people who are good people, whether it's on your council or my, my board, in a place where even if you're good people who intend to do good, you battle vociferously over different things. I'm not imposing anything on anybody other than to say, thank you for being in it. That's it. Thank you for being in it, and thank you for being here. It's, you're the reason that, like, I appreciate, usually I sit up on this thing and I look down on everybody, but, you know, I always tell people, like, most of the people I deal with who are my age or older are really like scared of the future, and usually, because we've had all this craziness and stuff, but usually I'd say, like, you know, go to a school class and get inspired, not only about what, what you have in you to do, but also what we need to do to make sure we don't pass a big pile of garbage on, so, thank you.
Supervisor, we have one hand that just popped up from the public. Do you mind answering a question?
Yeah, no problem.
Angela, can you hear us?
I can.
I can. Can you hear me?
Yep, go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Gore, for your presentation. There are several things that you mentioned, not to cut them down on you, no, no. Our relationship, it's hot, it's cold. Whack-a-mole, when you said, you know, the county and other agents were playing whack-a- people fly, fly. Well, you know, I, I can understand your perspective for the homeless, but my perspective is for the community, because our lives are also whack-a-mole, allowing homeless to take over on rivers and start fires. You know, we don't know whose neighborhood's going to burn down, we don't know whose house is next. It's pretty scary. I know that you guys have been working hard along the river, I really hope that you're going to implement no overnight parking, no parking signs, maybe some boulders. Mayor Lance can talk to you about the generous offer that we got, that I don't need to publicly disclose, but Mayor Lance can discuss that with you. You talk about prevention for homelessness, what about rent control? All these apartments are going in, but it doesn't seem that they are low-income apartments for everybody. You can't just focus on the people that are homeless, whether they're drug addicts, or mentally unstable, whatever the case might be. These low-income apartments will also help people that are in a position where they can't even pay their current rent, and they're going to face homelessness, you know, by allowing all these apartments to go in that are restrictive. There, there's apartments that are going in for chronic, chronic homeless, there's apartments going in for migrant workers only. That, that's discriminatory, no matter how you want to look at it. It's not even about race, it's just discriminatory, because these people don't, they can't afford to live. You know, I never understood why the Board of Supervisors didn't adopt Laura's Law, and you said you didn't have support. I'm concerned by that. I would like for you to clarify who you didn't have support from. You guys said you had to go through all these processes along the waterways, but the homeless can do whatever they want, they destroy it. But yet you have to go through all these permits, and, and, you know, all these officials out there, and that's not right. Traumatizing to clean up their encampments. What about our trauma, facing fires and getting our houses ripped off, and our cars ripped off, and people accosted on the roads, you know, just walking down the road? The Redwood Trail, I know Melanie Bagby is so passionate about that, I'm scared it's going to become a homeless highway, because there's going to be signage, you know, no overnight camping, security. What's the plan to prevent that from becoming Joe Redota Trail, like you said? And my, my last statement is, it's been seven years since my family has been able to go to the river and enjoy it safely and peacefully. And this is coming from somebody who's lived here 20 years now, where we used to go every weekend religiously, and now we can't. And so it would be amazing if you can get the river back so that the families can enjoy it, so people can go out there and be safe, and not, not have to look over their shoulders. So again, I thank you all for what you have done, and I just, I don't think that you need to give too many kudos just yet, because you do still have quite a bit to go. And I really, really hope that you implement these, these signs, and you start enforcing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. You want to respond?
Yeah, I, I hear it. I hear, I hear you. I hear the frustration. I, I drive down in front of my house in Hillsburg, and next to Giorgio's, over by the RV park, and I, and I, and I see, ultimately it's clean now, but I see a homeless encampment there that, at the same time that other people drive by just like me, and they can't get a damn accessory dwelling unit permit for under $15,000, I see it. I see the lack of common sense on the ground. I see laws that contradict each other. I try to find ways to just drive progress, and I don't really, I'm agnostic about how progress looks. But I tell people that my political party is the Get Stuff Done Party, because it's all I can do right now. I can't, you know, and so there are some times where, like I say, I just have to, the only thing I can do is, is not get too high on the highs, and not get too low on the lows, because there's more work to do next day. I mean, we've, as Angela mentioned, I mean, we've, we've sat and been on the phone and worked on issues where we've aligned completely on, like, okay, properties, and how to put our activism together to get something done on the River Park area, and that, I hope it's, you know, gets towards something. We've had other things where, you know, it's, you know, people in the community, whether it's the speaker, or me, or others, are just like, that's not enough. And that's why you get up, do it again. So I, I take that as constructive, not just feedback, but a mandate to continue to work hard, because I want to make sure, I, I kind of want to make everybody happy, which is ultimately a problem I have, because it doesn't always work, but, but it is what it is. With respect to some of the specifics about like overnight parking, so, I actually, and the question about Laura's Law, I mean, I'll just say that the Laura's Law implementation was not supported initially by our staff, even though I tried to vote for it and force a discussion to the board, because they were saying that they didn't have the resources to be able to implement it, which means we didn't have the funding from the state. Now, what happened was, is ironically, is now the care court comes in, pushed by Newsom, and the California State Association of Counties opposed it at first, because, well, and because they want the funding to come with it from the state, and in many ways, that's right. But even me as the president, now the past president of the California State Association of Counties, supported it, because I don't, even though I want the resources, I know we have to figure out a way to do it. So the other thing about the parking signs is that, that's what's next. So I have, at this last homeless meeting, I have requested, as a chair, is to come back with the vehicle code, but in the meantime, you know, the vehicle code is what, is what really takes care of RVs and other things like that, but we have put up boulders, you can see them. We'll put up more where there's issue areas. We're going to keep providing opportunities for people, but, you know, I'm not in a world where I, so, we've had a lot of people who want us to support what are called sanctioned encampments. What sanctioned encampment means is that you, as an authority, say, yeah, you can use this public piece of land to run your encampment, and you can run it on your own. We did that at, at a couple sites, kind of were forced to do that. The Dollar Tree in Roseland, Joe Redota Trail, a little bit, even though we didn't allow it, it kind of allowed itself, because we were under injunction by a federal judge. And basically, you know, we had to clear both of those based on health and safety, syphilis outbreaks, trench foot, a lot of other crimes. So we had, so the only way we were able to clear those was by going in to the judge under health and safety, and saying like, this is so much. So sanctioned encampments are real tough, because also individuals want, they say they can manage themselves, but then every time I've done it, it's come back with a, like, like, well, you need to give us this to manage it. So, you know, that's why we're doing more indoor/outdoor shelters, kind of like the Haven of Hope model in San Antonio, that's where the Los Gilicos Village came out of, you know? I'm fighting my, I got, I got people who are accusing me of ruining their, their town by buying hotels, and putting people into permanent supportive housing. I just kind of look back at people at the end of the day and say, if you don't like my solution, give me one that's better. So I, and I look forward to that. I've had actually some of those come from the caller, and from other, other individuals, and so onward. Thank you. Thank you for the comment. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Supervisor, for coming here and giving us your time. We really appreciate it as a community and as a council.
Pleasure. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I could. I just, again, want to thank you, and please, Jen and Jenny have been just invaluable to me as resources, and thank, and, you know, I, I understand the constraints that we all operate under, and we understand the laws, and we understand court decisions that throw the law out, and how we react. So it, it's been an uphill from day one, and it's still uphill, but we've accomplished a lot together. Collaboration is what it's about, and together we'll make it, just keep the progress. So thank you.
The fire survivors, the fire survivors, you know, taught me, and when we rebuild, still are rebuilding, is an amazing quote, which was, "The only progress in this world is imperfect relentless progress." And so it's like, I just tell people, I'm like, I refuse to be just like you all, paralysis, paralysis, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute break. We'll reconvene at 7:55.
I realize it's eight o'clock, we haven't got to the consent calendar.
Okay, we'll reconvene at 7:56. Moving on to D, Consent Calendar. All items under Consent Calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council, unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second Mr. Mayor.
First from Bagby, second from Cruz.
Public comment.
Any comments? Public comment? Thank you. Seeing none. Roll call.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
E Communications, anything?
No communications, Mayor.
All right. Going to G1, Discussion on Potential Participation in County-Wide Ban on Construction of New Gas Station Infrastructure.
Mayor, councilmembers, yeah, this is our, kind of our initial discussion of our potential participation in this county-wide gas station ban, should, new gas station infrastructure ban, and I'll go into a little detail what that means. So we're seeking direction tonight from the council on whether we should initiate this process. It would go to Planning Commission, and then back to council for final approval, if you were to ask us to do that. We did receive one correspondence from the Coalition opposing new gas stations. I believe we have a representative here tonight from that organization. Just a little background, this is a, the Regional Climate Protection Authority, in response to- in response to the climate emergency has asked cities in Sonoma County to consider banning the construction and, and expansion of new infrastructure uh, related to gas, gasoline, uh, distribution. This is supported by a number of actions at the federal, state, and local level. Uh, the President's order, executive order to reduce the number of passi- to reduce the passenger vehicles to 50% electric by 2030. Numerous state initiatives and local initiatives as well. Uh, in terms of the local participation, we have a, a sheet here. So far, we have Katati, who's banned, uh, gas stations on July 16th, 2022. Petaluma was March 21. Roanoke Park, March 22. Uh, Santa Rosa, August 23, or 22, excuse me, Sebastopol in April 22. Sonoma has not taken any action yet. Hillsburg has not taken any action yet. And this is our initial discussion. And, uh, I forgot Windsor. Windsor has, uh, agendized it for October 5th. And they did have some positive feedback on their initial discussion like we're having tonight. So really, uh, this is, um, our first go at it. Uh, we do have six gas stations in town currently. Uh, there was another one proposed for behind the 7-Eleven and that was going to be a card lock style. They did apply, but we haven't heard from them in quite a long time. So I'm not sure that's officially not occurring, but we, given the length of time we haven't heard from them, I would think that that project is probably not happening. Uh, most of the ordinances around the county do allow for the remodeling of gas stations. So like the Snack Shack or the, that type of thing. And they also allow for upgrading of pumps if there's a new technology related to pumps, but they don't allow for the expansion. So there would be no additional pumps allowed. Um, so this is where, you know, this is where we are at this point. We're just, before we put a ton of work into it, we've done a kind of a quick look at the zoning ordinance and what would need to change. There'd be some stuff in the general plan as well if we move forward, but we didn't want to spend too much effort until we get the green light from the council, if that's the direction tonight. Uh, with that, I'll just, uh, it's, it's the end of the report. Um, if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Kevin. Who wants to go first?
We did receive correspondence from Comcast, but I don't see it in the packet.
It was, uh, emailed.
Did everybody, just everybody get that? I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
It's included, uh, should be included in Granicus.
Oh, I didn't see it in Granicus. That's why, under this item. Did I miss it?
Yeah, it's on the bottom of the attachments.
You'll likely have to refresh if you've already opened it once.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Sorry about that. I think that's, that was my question.
Councilmember Paula?
Well, I, um, I don't really have any questions. I guess a comment would be just to throw out, uh, you know, I think, uh, I'm glad to hear it does allow the remodeling of an existing station as well. It allow the remodeling and replacement of pumps over the years. My question would be, we only have six stations, which is more than adequate, I think, for a small town, recognizing there's no stations from Yucaya to Cloverdale in between and no stations from Cloverdale to Hillsburg in between. So we kind of get a lot of freeway traffic coming in to fill up as well. So my, my concern would be what, or I guess my question first before I say concern is, if, for instance, one of our gas stations should close, so if we capped it at six, so say, uh, hypothetically, if Chevron decided it wasn't profitable enough and they decided to close the station, so one day it closes. And two months later, a new vendor wants to come in and reopen that station, such as another shell or something comes in, would this prohibit them from reopening the station? Because I wouldn't want to see that. I would want to see if an existing station should close, that a new vendor coming in would have the ability to open that station. So we would maybe cap it at six, but have the ability, if one closed or two closed for financial reasons or whatever, that somebody else could come in and reopen that at that same spot. So I guess that's my question.
I, I believe we could put that into the ordinance amendment if that was the direction. I don't know that we, what the best way to do that would be, but I'm sure that there is a way that we could, uh, include that in the, in the ordinance amendment.
And maybe just to, let, let me add a, a point to make regarding existing uses. There, there are provisions within your zoning ordinance that, uh, provide. So for, for instance, if council decided to adopt a, a, a ban or prohibition on new gas stations, uh, typically that would restrict, uh, any future construction of new stations. But, but there is a provision within the zoning ordinance that provides for, uh, continuation of, uh, uh, non-conforming uses. So, and usually there is a time provision related to that. How long a use can, uh, uh, continue as a non-conforming use after its ceased activity? And I think sometimes that provision is what comes into play. So for instance, if a gas station was to close, there's now prohibited, uh, within a certain timeframe, it could be reconstructed if it, um, if it comes within that non-conforming provision within your zoning ordinance. So that would be something that would need to be looked at, uh, in this context. Councilmember Paula?
Thank you.
And analyzed, I think, as part of any, any future prohibition. Because I, I, I think it's a, it's a policy option for council, uh, to say, you know, if one does phase out, for example, or close, uh, no, no new may mean that it could, a new station could not be constructed in this place. But again, we'd have to look in the context of the, the, uh, non-conforming provisions and what the timeframe allows for a continuation of those uses. So a little bit of a technical answer to your question. It's just, but, but there are some, some conforming, non-conforming provisions that we'd kind of have to look at in this context.
Well, thank you. That would be one of my concerns and I'd want to have that well laid out so I could be clear.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I would like to know if, um, there were to be a new vendor in the same location. My question is, would it have to comply with the number of pumps that were there originally?
Generally speaking, the ordinances that have been adopted through this program have, yes, they would. That's the answer. That it doesn't allow for the expansion.
Okay. Yeah, that's my.
If we follow the model that has been, you know, patterned by the, the previous cities.
Okay. Yes, um, that, that would be, um, a concern. And if it were to happen, then it would have to be the same number of pumps as originally, uh, placed. Uh, and I do agree, we should not have any more gas stations in this town, regardless of how much money it could bring.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, just kind of piggybacking on what Councilmember Paula, what his concerns were. I think I share those concerns as well. As a matter of fact, I'd like to take it a little further that before we, if we decide that we're going to go ahead and pass this ordinance, that we check with the gas stations that is going to go in behind the 7-Eleven to make sure that in fact they, um, uh, have decided not to, um, put their facility there. Um, also, I'd like to see them, um, gas stations, if they don't have diesel now. The chicks that we have in place, uh, should be allowed to have the option to put diesel in at some point. I don't think anyone's building gas stations based on the price it would cost to, to construct one with all the regulations that are in place now. Um, so the transfer of ownership would be important to me. Uh, being able to expand, uh, to diesel would also be important to me. And, uh, succession of ownership of the facility, uh, is important as well. You know, I think, um, you know, the whole push here is to do away with fossil fuel. Uh, and I'm not so sure that, uh, Governor Newsom, um, um, elected very close only and, and I believe that's in 2035. Uh, I don't believe the current structures can support that. Um, I don't think that there's enough, uh, recharging of stations, um, to be able to, uh, to handle that. So I, I'm not quite ready to kill the fossil fuel. Um, so, um, but if I did, I'd surely like to make sure that we could, that the current owner could sell it, uh, another franchise could take it over, um, and that they could expand to diesel as well. So that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Can I go? I'm going to go first. So everyone knows I'm a little bit different in my thought process than, uh, my council. Um, I, I look at Cloverdale as a low-income commuter town. And I'll bet you close to 60% of our population travels outside of Cloverdale in a vehicle to go to work. And anyone that is in town in the mornings knows that it's a long line at every gas station that we currently have with our larger population than when these gas stations were put in. Our gas stations provide not just fuel for us to go to work, but they provide jobs for our community. They provide food for our community. Everyone knows you can go in and get a good breakfast burrito in the morning when you have nothing else to do, you know, while you're waiting for your gas to pump. They also supply fuel, as Councilmember Paula said, from Yucaya to Hillsburg. And we get a lot of visitors in here, a lot of people that come in from vacations with their trailers. There's not enough electricity to only have electric cars. And PG&E says it's impossible. Um, they've made it very clear, we, not everyone in this low-income community can afford a Tesla, nor will they. Uh, I don't think we'll get more than what we already have because we, as a low-income community, it's just not feasible. We don't have any charging stations here, a few, or few, very few. Um, I see the state with, as Vice Mayor stated, with Governor Newsom making new laws for 2035, I see the gas station ban becoming a statewide, uh, call in the next few years. And so I personally would find it crazy for anyone to try to even build a gas station at this point. I don't know if we have anywhere zoned that we could fit a gas station at this point. But I look at this ban as a cart before the horse type of bandwagon ban, and I'm against it. So with that, I'll open up to the public. And we have this gentleman right here. Sir, please state your name for us.
Of course, uh, I think it's that you can hear me. Uh, good evening, councilmembers. Uh, Mayor Lance, Vice Mayor Walter, councilmembers. Uh, my name is Woody Hastings. I am the co-coordinator of the Coalition Opposing New Gas Stations. Uh, and I'm here tonight to strongly support the effort, uh, here described by the staff. Uh, Congus, as we're known for short, um, was founded four years ago in 2019. Um, we're a, a Sonoma County-wide, uh, community-based, not-for-profit, um, organization. And, um, we did submit a letter and that talked a bit about the climate issue, the climate imperative and other issues. I think a question I want to try to answer here tonight, different from what's in the letter, is the question we've gotten from some other cities, which is, why bother with this? Why not, why not let the market make the decision, right? Here's the reason. A new gas station built today in 2022, given what a gas station has specked out, the technology, how long it's meant to last, 40 years. So that gas station would still theoretically be, be operating in 2062, long after the state of California has weaned itself, uh, you know, mostly, uh, off of, of fossil fuels. And the point about not being ready now, that's absolutely correct, Vice Mayor Walter. Uh, we're not ready now, but guess what? The state of California has over $10 billion in the current budget to expand electric vehicle charging infrastructure, to get lower-income folks into electric vehicles, to get those charging stations in multifamily dwellings. Uh, and then the federal government just recently enacted the, uh, the IRA Inflation Reduction Act, which is going to bring over $50 billion to the state of California for clean vehicles as well. Um, so the trajectory we're on is away from gas, gasoline use, toward clean, uh, vehicles and other methods, methods of transportation. Uh, and so I would strongly agree that, that, you know, it's unlikely that there's going to be a proposal for a gas station in, in Cloverdale. And I think it would be crazy. I agree with you on that one, Mayor Lance. Uh, but we were surprised in 2019 that there was a gas station proposal out in the rural area of Highway 116 and Stoddy Point Road. We were very surprised. Not, this wasn't NIMBY, not in our backyard. This was far from where we lived, but it was in Sonoma County. After city, all of the cities i- in, in the county and the county itself have adopted climate emergency resolutions, right? So on one hand, you've got a climate emergency resolution. On the other hand, you're permitting new gas stations. It doesn't, doesn't make sense. So we were surprised and we, uh, you know, have succeeded in helping to defeat three gas stations in Sonoma County. Uh, it would be a mistake. Every one of these are what are called LULU's, locally undesirable land uses, that leave quite frequently toxic contaminated soil that take hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars in some cases to remediate. So, um, it's something that really, it's a land use that you really probably don't want to add more of in the city. So there's these reasons other than the climate crisis to do this. Uh, and it has to do with staff time, dealing with permit applications for new gas stations. You could be working on other stuff. Um, and you know, the six cities that have done this so far, there have not been any unintended repercussions, consequences. It's been very popular, um, lots of support from all the communities and I think your community here, even the lower-income folks would support this. They understand that there's a transition underway and the state is providing resources to them and the city can help with that too. One last thing I'll urge of that the, uh, you know, we've seen the urge to sort of add in things like, oh, well, if we're going to, you know, prohibit new gas station construction, we should, um, expand electric vehicles or do some other, you know, clean fuel program or something like that. We urge to keep it simple, um, and, um, really just work on the prohibition alone. And by the way, I just want to say one more thing, which is that this really only applies to new construction, not the existing gas stations. Those are, as we agree, those are essential services. You must have the, for, for, we're still fueling up on gasoline right now, right? For the most part. So, and you know, the Coalition opposing new gas stations, we do not advocate starting some kind of process to shut down. They will shut down over time. And I would be highly surprised if another operator wanted to come in after because the reason they would be closing their, their gas station is because there's no more demand, because people are switching to other technologies, better mousetrap technologies. Uh, we've got four years of experience in this now, so we'd be happy to help, work with staff if, if you know, you want to see some of the stuff that's gone on before. And so I know I'm way over time, so I'll stop there. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Woody. I appreciate it. I know that with your correspondence and our huge population, that's why. But you had a lot of knowledge and I want to keep you going, so I appreciate it. Uh, I see one hand in the public.
Mr. Mayor, can I please?
If you, if you don't mind, Vice Mayor, I, we were already open to the public.
Absolutely.
If I could call that last hand and then I'll bring it back to you.
Jenny, if you can test your microphone for us.
Jenny, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes. Uh, my name's Jenny Blaker. I'm the co-coordinator of Coalition Opposing New Gas Stations along with Woody. Um, and obviously I'm in favor of, of this and urging you to, uh, to support it. Um, yes, the question really is why, why build new gas stations or expand gas stations now, which will last for 40 years? Every one of them becomes a toxic cleanup site. Um, as you've already said, there are enough already and it doesn't look like there's going to be any need for anymore. So really, this is just about, um, forward-thinking, not, not building new infrastructure that will cause problems for cleanup in the future. And we're trying to, because of the climate crisis, which is on us and we have, um, so much evidence of that all the time now, that, um, we need to do everything we can to reverse it and to, uh, and so this is about not prolonging our dependency on fossil fuels into the future. And there will be changes and there will be market changes and so on. It's, but it's really just about not, not building new problems now for the future. Um, and the other questions about, um, of the electric vehicle charging And the other questions about electric vehicle charging infrastructure, or public transportation, better facilities for bicyclists and pedestrians, things that will help get people around without having to use fossil fuels, will be part of the picture going forward. But this particular issue right now is simply about no new gas stations, no expansion of existing ones. The other thing is just to say, there was a mention in your agenda report that the city would forego new tax revenues that could have resulted from potential new gas stations or expansions. But the reality is that in California, revenue from gas sales are aggregated at the state level, then allocated to cities based on population and the number of registered vehicles. And so it wouldn't actually make any difference to tax revenues, or hardly any difference to tax revenues for the city of Cloverdale if you said no to any new gas stations. That's it. My time's nearly up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jenny. No other hands. I'll bring it back. Vice Mayor, you're up.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think the number that was put out there was 10 billion in state resources to build new charging stations, if I heard it correctly. You know, I just wonder why the state continues to alienate businesses instead of putting their arms around them and bringing them in as part of the solution. Is there any reason why new gas stations being permitted couldn't have a charging station as part of the process for them to build and move forward? The same with the current gas station. If somebody wanted to put in another pump, maybe they have to put in three charging stations. So, and, you know, as opposed to trying to find a location, you know, maybe the state should look at using existing gas stations. And I think you're right. Eventually, either the gasoline or the electricity business would become nonprofitable. So it would take out of itself. And as far as the cleanup of toxic sites, I would think that maybe part of the application process is to post a bond of X amount of dollars for cleanup, or potential cleanup. So I think there's some options that the state could look at, and even we as a city could look at. Maybe going forward, if one of our gas stations wanted to do a remodel or something, maybe we can insist that they put in some charging stations. And I don't mean just one or two, I mean a number of them. So that was it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I have the advantage of having seen it several times, because this has been very thoroughly vetted by the Regional Climate Protection Authority, where I serve. And I've watched this topic kind of make its progress. And we've seen the other cities and their staffs have thoroughly vetted this issue, and they've passed this. You know, I think that the ask from is very simple, and it's very doable, and it's very common sense. From a, especially for the city of Cloverdale. This council sees and knows how, and I'm talking about our history, and our history of gas station. Our town limits are pockmarked by undevelopable properties that were damaged by this town being covered by gas stations, going back almost to the turn of the century. If anyone should have the vision to pass this ordinance, it should be the city of Cloverdale. We should have been the first, not the last, or the fourth, or fifth, or sixth, because we've inherited the pollution, the groundwater contamination, and the lots that have been undevelopable, that have hindered our economic development for decades. If anyone should pass this ordinance, it should be Cloverdale. But I get ahead of myself, because we're not considering passing the ordinance tonight. We're considering, what's the next action that should happen? Should we go ahead and, you know, pass this on to the Planning Commission for review? Because they might have some recommendations as well. But I would urge this council, and of course, and the Planning Commission as well, to follow the advice of the folks who have been working on this for years. Let's keep it simple, sweetie. We don't need to start going in and saying, well, if you do this, you have to put in charging stations, or if you do this, then this is the limit. This is a very simple, straightforward ordinance. What we're saying today is that we have six gas stations in this town. And yeah, I have to drive an electric car now. I haven't pumped gas in town for a long time. But I used to, I've had a car here, and I used to commute out of town. I've never been in a line that was, that would make me drive to Hillsburg to get gas. Never once. I don't think anyone has, except for like, in an emergency or for a holiday weekend or something like that. The six stations that we have, they serve us very well, and they are a really great community resource. We have, in this state, we're looking at an absolute ban on new ICE cars being sold in the state after 2035. President Biden has thrown down the gauntlet and said he wants to see ICE engines eliminated by 2030. The six that we have right now, even with the growth that we have as a potential growth within our city limits, it's going to serve our residents and our visitors very well. And I'll tell you, the other piece of information I thought was really interesting, when I was hearing about the feedback from the cities that went ahead and passed this, is that the small mom-and-pop gas station owners are actually supporting this. And here's why. Because the larger corporations with key cards are the ones who are coming in and looking for new properties. And that's exactly what we saw at the property adjacent to the 7-Eleven. Those are not as, those don't have a lot of employees, they don't provide a lot of jobs, and those are corporate operations. If we can make sure that our mom-and-pop gas stations that are located on the boulevard can continue serving our residents, and Aztec Burrito, which is probably one of the best places in town, can continue to serve our customers, you know, those gas stations are not going to go away for now, because they're cash cows. They're not going to become vacant. I'm not concerned. I think the issue before us tonight is, are we ready to read the writing on the wall and understand that ICE engines are going to be phased out, and that this is good for our economy in Cloverdale? It's good to protect our mom-and-pop businesses, and it protects our staff time from being taken up with the kind of red tape that we don't need to invest in. We should be investing in our technological future, not our past. So I am certainly hoping, I certainly support this, and I'm hoping that we're going to move forward and send this to the Planning Commission for further consideration. And I would hope that they can review it, and that it can get done as-is, because it's simple, it's straightforward, it's good for our economy, and it's good for our community. It shows that we can look to the future. So my preference would be to advise staff to just go ahead and send this to Planning Commission for review, and bring it back to the council at a future date.
I heard some news last night, that there's going to be a construction and funding and construction of charging, electrical charging stations in interstates throughout the country. So it's not just a California initiative. And I really, it really pains me to see corners of this town where we could have development, and it cannot be done because there have been gas stations in the past. And we all know those places. We are no longer 101. We are now the town of Cloverdale, the city of Cloverdale. So I think the gas stations that we have are enough. I think we should continue to support them. I know many people who go to Costco. They don't do gas in Cloverdale. And we just need to make sure that we leave our youth a better place, not more contaminated land as we are right now. So thank you, and I propose that we support this, and that it goes to the Planning Commission.
Well, thank you. You know, my only concern remains to be unintended impacts on our residents and travelers. You know, it's nice that the governor's going to put in a lot of charging stations, but we have a very unstable power grid right now, and rolling blackouts happen frequently, especially on heatwaves. I mean, this, we had between 4:00 and 9:00, "Don't use energy." I mean, keep it down. Those came out alerts. So that means you really have a hard time charging your vehicle if you need to. I mean, I know we're not here to talk about that, but there are consequences. The power grid's not being addressed, at least that I've heard. There are a lot of infrastructure needs that need to be fixed. I agree with the whole concept. Gas stations are a thing of the past, but I'm wondering if we're moving them out before we have our infrastructure in place. I'd feel much more comfortable if the infrastructure was there today, and we're saying now we're going to go to the next phase. I feel I would want to see, before it goes to the Planning Commission, the language that I understand would allow the six stations that we have to continue operating, especially if one was to shut down for months, and the new owner wanted to come in and reopen that location. I'd want to see that in place. So as it's presented, I'm not really prepared to move it forward. So, thank you.
I think I've made myself clear. This is very cart before the horse. Intentions are good. I agree. It is the future, there's no doubt. But I think we're so far from being ready. PG&E says we're not ready. PG&E says we'll never be ready for what Newsom's proposing, and that makes it very difficult for me to support at this point. And when it comes to the infrastructure, a lot of people don't know, when we had our heatwave, the only reason Cloverdale didn't lose power is because all our generators were running from PG&E at our substation. And they were powering 37,000 houses with diesel generators. Otherwise, our entire county would have been shut down. So you would have been without power for the week of 117 degrees if we didn't have this. All of those generators is being supplied from our fueling stations. We're just too early for this, and I can't support it. So that's where I'm at. So I guess we look to direction. We have, really, Gus, it's kind of up to you as to whether you want to move it forward and allow Planning Commission to review it.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Governor Newsom, I guess it was a couple weeks ago, decided to leave the nuclear power plant online because the fossil fuel stations couldn't keep up with the demand for the air conditioning and everything else that the residents of California needed to do with electricity. You know, I'm not ready to move it along to the Planning Commission at this point. I think at some point, we need to do that, but I'd really like to see the state trying partner with existing gas stations. And, you know, it just seems that the facilities are already there. You know, they can bring in fossil fuel stations in as a partner, as opposed to alienate them, and hang the hammer over their head that in 2035, their business is going to be closed. So that's where I am right now. I'd just like to table it for a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Chris?
Yeah. Councilmember Paula, did you say that you would consider it if it were revised?
I could support, as I mentioned earlier, the six stations. I support eliminating. What I want to make sure is that if one of the six was to close, that the ordinance would allow a new purchaser to come in and reopen that station if they chose to. They may choose not to, as it was pointed out by Woody, that maybe if they close, it's because there's no profit, and that would be a business decision. But I don't want it to be the city to be the one to say, you can't reopen the station. So, again...
But that's not the question, Councilmember Paula.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that's what you asked me.
Well, yeah, but the question that we're contemplating is if we're going to recommend to pass this as no more gas stations in Cloverdale.
It does include the clause of, it does say it in there, that no expansion of gas diesel pumps at existing stations. I wanted to make sure, and that was my question, does it include the ability for, if a gas station did close, one of the six closed? For instance, if Chevron came up tomorrow and said, there's not enough profit, we're closing, as a big corporation, that station set vacant for three months, but Exxon comes in and says, we want to open that spot, we feel that it's viable. Would we prohibit that under our ordinance? I would not support that. I would want that they would have that ability to make application and remodel and exercise a business out of that spot.
I don't know. I support that. It's just no more pumps and so on.
Well, I wonder if I could maybe put a different idea out there, and that is that, again, this is something that, you know, we're supposed to give direction to staff. First of all, Joe, I know you watch the news, and the fact is, is that oil companies are making record profits right now, and no gas stations. Chevron's not going to close anytime soon. They'd be like Safeway closing grocery store. They're cash cows. And we've got to, you know, we have to deal with the single set of facts. What I'd be willing to consider if there is support amongst the council is to direct staff to bring specific language back for our review. And then if we are a little bit more comfortable with it, then go ahead and send it to the Planning Commission for review. I just want to, you know, point out, while I'm on the facts page, I don't know if council members are aware, Chief, I think we've standardized on the Dodge Charger as our patrol car, is that correct?
Yeah. So hopefully, we've ordered the ICE cars if we want them, because Dodge has already announced that they're discontinuing the Charger and an ICE version, and it's going to be all-electric. So then there are multiple reasons for that. I mean, and I want to get back to something that Woody mentioned, in that our six gas stations are more than adequate, and they're essential. They provide essential services. We're not talking about closing them down. We're not talking about getting into, you know, telling them how to run their business. I absolutely think that we need to protect them for as long as we can. And part of that, and some of the testimony that was given in Petaluma and Marne Park, is that the gas lock stations are hurting the profitability of our mom-and-pop gas stations. And that's the majority of the gas stations. I'm worried about the market at the north end of town. That is such a great resource. Folks in that whole neighborhood go there for butter and milk, and to buy, not just buy gas, but it's an essential part of the neighborhood. It's the same on the gas stations near Ace Harbor. It's an essential facility for that neighborhood. And those businesses, I think, are going to be really successful when they are ready to transition off of gasoline. But again, we're not saying we're going to close those gas stations. We're saying no additional new gas stations. And the ones that have the most potential to open in Cloverdale are gas locks that don't provide great jobs, that they don't provide a great amount of revenue, and they're not locally owned. So I think that it actually is in the best interests of our business owners to go ahead and take this step. The other thing that I think we should consider is, not only are we, you know, I don't think we're going to be losing out on gasoline sales that would either benefit us sales-tax-wise or gas-tax-wise. I think Councilmember Cruz brought up a great point. There are a lot of folks here in town, they buy their gas at the Costco in Santa Rosa, or they buy their gas at the Costco in Ukiah. They don't even, they don't even shop here. But I would really like to see us explore this, keep this very, very simple, because we do need to move into the future. I think it's a great opportunity for us to show folks in Cloverdale that we are preparing for a carbon-neutral future, but we're also protecting the important resources that our gas stations and our markets provide our residents right now. So if, I don't know, who else is talking? But if we could, if we could agree to say that we'll get some sample ordinances, just with the feedback that you've heard tonight, and bring that back to the council for review, I'm happy to do that, too. to the council for review, I'm happy to do that, too. But I'd hate to see us dismiss this out of hand when it's a great opportunity for us to join the other cities who are taking this step across Sonoma County.
Vice Mayor, please go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that, you know, I agree that electric vehicles are better for the environment than gas guzzlers. We're just not ready for this yet. You know, I'm not so sure that the state's going to be able to keep up with the infrastructure to power those vehicles. And, you know, I'd love to see Woody go back to the agencies and see if there's any way the current gas stations could reach out for some of that money and install charging stations at their facility. It's, like I said, I'm not going to support this going back to the Planning Commission, wasting staff's time at this point, until I have some assurances that we're doing the best we can to improve those charging stations.
See a hand in the public, if you guys don't mind, if you want to call on them. It's Jenny again.
Hello. Thank you. That took a little time to unmute. It's Jenny Blaker again. Thank you for letting me speak again. I just wanted to say that there's absolutely nothing to stop the city of Cloverdale supporting installing an electric vehicle charging. And the best places for it seem to be where people are already spending quite a bit of time, at home, at work, at places like health centers, cinemas, you know, shopping centers, places already are, rather than in gas stations. In gas stations, people go in, charge their car, it takes less than 10 minutes, and they're off again. With the current EV charging, you need to leave the car for a lot longer than that. So it makes sense to leave it somewhere where people are already going to be for an hour or two anyway. And there's nothing to stop. In fact, we would, Congress would absolutely support Cloverdale in thinking about installing electric vehicle charging or encouraging businesses to do so, say at supermarkets, things like that, so where people are parking anyway. And that just need, it's just that that would need to be dealt with separately in a separate ordinance. I'm not sure it makes sense to install electric vehicle charging at gas stations, because they are such different kinds of, such different kinds of things. You know, charging an electric car is quite different and takes longer. And also, you're not supposed to sit around at a gas station for too long because of the toxic fumes. There are cancer warnings, you know, when you charge your car up, say, don't stay here for too long. So really, the idea of charging an electric vehicle needs to be completely separate from the idea of refueling with gasoline. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Sorry, the only driver of an electric car up here. Jenny really teases out a really good point. Coupling gas stations and charging stations is just absolutely inappropriate. And of course, it was even brought up in the packet, and the correspondence from Congress is, they don't belong in the same conversation. I'm an electric car driver. I charge at home, and when I'm traveling, I charge at a place where I'm going to be for a couple of hours. She's absolutely right. And that's not, I don't really want to hang out at a gas station for, you know, the 20 minutes or the two hours, you know, 20 minutes if I'm rapid charging, the two hours if I'm charging on Level 2. And so, yeah, it's really a red herring and a moot point to try to tie this issue, to try to tie charging stations and gas stations, because that's, we're not talking about that. We're talking about a land use question, and we're talking about staff time question. That's what we're talking about tonight. So I'm hoping that we can really keep the conversation centered on the actual topic on the agenda. And that's a land use question. Should we not take new permits for gas stations? They're complex, they're hairy, they come with a 40-year commitment. In our case in Cloverdale, they come with a history of contaminated properties that have held back our economic development. So I think we, again, I think we should be leading on this. But I would be perfectly happy to direct staff to pull the ordinance and the work that was done from previous cities, bring that back to the council for consideration, if there's support for that.
I just want to say that, considering what Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Paula have said, we need to revise the language and some of the concepts, and then bring it back for consideration. But again, it's a question of land use.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like I say, I already said it, I don't want to repeat it, but if it could come back with some revision that safeguards. So I'm just concerned about unintended consequences. I recognize that, you know, that the intent is not to close gas stations. The city's not looking to do that. But if an owner closes it on their own, or two gas stations closed over the next two weeks, are those permanently closed? I want to make sure safeguards are in place, so staff knows if an applicant comes in, they can move forward with that. I just would like to see that language. But I'm fine with the limited to the current six.
I'd absolutely support that, as I think you've heard, gotten a lot of feedback and bring back the, we don't have the language from the other cities in the packet. Take a look at that. And with the recommendation of feedback that you've heard tonight, bring back some examples for us to discuss. I'd be happy to do that.
Councilmember Paula, are you suggesting that it does not go to the Planning Commission that comes back to the council first?
Yes.
I revise that recommendation as well, Mr. Vice Mayor.
So it sounds like you have good direction. Does that sound right?
I think some rice.
If I could jump in real quick, and I know it wasn't in the packet, but what you normally would get is an amendment to your zoning code that would prohibit, or that would take out gas stations or service stations out of your land use table as an allowable use. Then what you would have is a section that would be created. I think that your city manager did talk about non-conforming uses. Gas stations would become a non-conforming use, existing gas stations, which they'll be able to operate as non-conforming uses. But you would probably draft a section specifically for non-conforming gas stations, which would have the criteria in there of the what happens? What happens if it needs to expand? What happens if it closes down? For how long can it close down? And all those things that were discussed, I think Councilmember Paula brought up a lot of different points. But that would be in the new draft, the new section that would be non-conforming gas stations. That's what other jurisdictions have done, and possibly a suggestion of bringing back to the council examples of what other jurisdictions have done and how they have handled. I think that the major conversation is how to handle that non-conforming gas station section to encompass some of the concerns that were raised at today's meeting.
Sir? Good. All right. Okay, so is Vice Mayor. So we'll only have... Three, one, two, three. Okay, at 8:47, Councilmember Cruz and Vice Mayor Walter have to leave the meeting. So thank you guys for being here to this point.
Thank Woody and Jenny for the information as well, and yeah, I look forward to working on this.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, but the microphone cut out. I'm not quite sure how we got...
So there is new direction for city staff to bring it back to council with new direction for us to provide to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Before it goes to Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And thank you for excusing me.
Thank you for being here. You have a great night. Thank you. Councilmember Cruz, have a good night. Need help? Okay. G2, resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving an MOU with the Cloverdale Police Officers Association and authorizing the city manager to execute the MOU on behalf of the city.
Mayor, if I can, I'll take up both items, G2 and G3. They will require separate votes, and I want to note with both Councilmember Cruz and Councilmember Walter leaving, it will require, I believe, a 3-0 vote.
So David, let me read G3 at the same time, then, so that we can handle both. G3 says, "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving an MOU with the Cloverdale Classified Service Employees Association and authorizing the city manager to execute the MOU on behalf of the city." Thank you.
Just quick background, at your September 14th meeting, council did approve a set of labor agreements for your senior staff, the Dispatchers Association, as well as the Unaffiliated Employees Association. The terms of those agreements included the same provisions that are included in the agreements or the MOUs for both the Police Officers Association as well as the classified group. The primary terms include a tentative agreement for a two-year term starting July 1 of this year to June 30 of 2024, a one-time payment of $2,000, a salary adjustment reflecting a cost of living adjustment of 5% effective and retroactive to July 1 of 2022, and a subsequent cost of living adjustment of between 1 and 4% effective July 1, 2023, based on the publication of the Consumer Price Index by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. And there are other minor adjustments and amendments to the MOU. Staff is recommending approval of the two resolutions in your packet after a fairly detailed and lengthy negotiation process with both the Police Officers Association and the Cloverdale Classified Association. Adoption of these items tonight would mean that staff has concluded labor negotiations with all of your represented labor groups. And subsequent action would be to bring back a salary schedule for council's consideration that reflects the change in salary that would be adopted by these agreements, along with a comprehensive budget adjustment to reflect the cost of the COLAs in the current fiscal year. With that said, concludes staff's report. And again, the two items do require separate votes of council.
Thank you. Any comments? No questions. None? Do we have any motion? Public. I can see there's no public, and there's no public.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and move a resolution of City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving a memorandum of understanding with the Cloverdale Police Officers Association and authorizing the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding.
Second?
Roll call.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Mayor Land?
Aye.
Can we just go straight to recommending the resolution?
Well, yeah, because those all rolled into one, so.
I'm happy to do that. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving memorandum of understanding with the Cloverdale Classified Service Employees Association and authorizing the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Mayor Land?
Aye.
And for the record, both passed with 3-0 votes. All right. H, Subcommittee Reports. Finance, Admin, and Police. The next meeting is October 3, 2022. Planning and Sustainability?
Next meeting is October 18.
Public Works?
The next meeting will be October 25.
Fire District is discontinued. We can take that one off of the list, right? We can add it to...
Yes, we, because it's, there's a resolution approving, and we're going to just cancel it, just for public transparency, but it is canceled, and the next one will be discontinued.
Perfect, thank you. Joint City and School District, our next meeting is November 21st, which has been canceled. So we're going to have a special meeting on November 14. And the Homelessness Community Advisory Group, the next meeting is October 11. I believe that's at 1:30, correct?
1:30.
All right, any council reports?
Just real quickly, Mayor, on that last item, we are, we're currently coordinating with Supervisor Gore on a special meeting time, so potentially that meeting may be moved to 2:30 to accommodate Supervisor Gore's schedule due to his Board of Supervisors meeting that day. So there may be a change in, just a change in time, but not a change in date.
Thank you. We'll make sure we have it posted on time with the correct times. Informational reports?
Go back to council reports, just really quickly. I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, and unfortunately, we're shy of two other council members. In my council report, I did include the 17-page slide presentation from Alta Consulting, that they are going to be conducting the Great Rubber Trail Study. And they gave us that presentation at our recent meeting. And I just, I think there's really great information about how they're going to do the public outreach. And again, it's really going to encompass the area from the Mendocino County border through the trail up to Humboldt. But I think it's really important that Sonoma County residents, and especially Cloverdale residents, because I think that what's going to happen, just intuitively, instinctually, I don't know, common sense-wise, I think that what's going to end up happening is we're going to be a major jumping-off point for the Great Rubber Trail, especially with the smart train station located where it is, with the amenities that we have here. I think that's why I brought up to Supervisor Gore the need for a North County Parks Master Plan, because this could be a wild success. I want to make sure it is not a crazy failure. And I think it's incumbent on all of us, especially those of us with the, you know, with our lifelong experience in this area, that we, that we get involved and spread the word for Cloverdale residents and folks to be involved with that Great Rubber Trail Master Plan from the beginning. We have a lot to gain from it. We also have a lot to risk, and we need to be at the table and advocating for what we need, and then also being aware of what, how much we have to offer as a community as well. So I just want to make sure that the council and staff have access to that slideshow. And as I get more information, I'll be sharing it in my council reports in the future.
Thank you. Great information. Any informational reports?
Mayor, no informational reports.
Legislative reports, letters of support or opposition?
I just want to share with council that the city manager did prepare a letter of support for the Northern Sonoma County Fire District's and Cloverdale Fire District's interest in hiring a chief resiliency officer. That was shared with Mr. Jeff Peters, who is working on a grant application for, to help fund that effort. So that was sent out via email to Mr. Peters, along with council, who's copied on that email correspondence.
Yeah, and I shared that pretty extensively with my network, to the Northern Sonoma County Air Pollution Control District. I actually requested a letter from, it's a little bit of a stretch from Sonoma Clean Power, but I think that because of the rebuilding and resiliency work that they do, they'd be a great partner, lots of other partners, including, I made sure that Jenny Chamberlain was aware of it. And I was trying to say, well, wouldn't that be a great thing for him, for Supervisor Gore to announce at the meeting this evening? But I think that it was pretty cramped full. So I believe that they have a letter in the works, too. So I think if you can think of, we can think of any other agencies that, you know, have, or businesses, or, yeah, anyone who has a vested interest in Cloverdale being as prepared and resilient as possible, that would be a great person to, or great, yeah, send it out. Send it out to folks and ask them for a letter. Because I think it's a great step forward for our region.
City Manager Report?
No reports, Mayor.
Jose, City Attorney Report?
Just real quick, first of all, I apologize for not being there, a little under the weather. I didn't want to go share the germs that my children shared with me. I didn't want to go spread that there and then in the chambers. But just real quick, the governor did sign a few bills... But just real quick, the governor did sign a few bills will provide an update to the council, but some of them dealing with housing and allowing for housing to be built, and affordable housing being built in on commercial sites that were zone retail office, retailer office. We're looking at that legislation to see how it affects Cloverdale. Also, I know that we've been using the Assembly Bill 361 regarding the Brown Act meetings. There was a bill that was signed that will take, in effect, beginning of next year, dealing with kind of the Brown Act, not with pandemics, but how you can call in, council option, call in without posting. It has a lot of requirements. It's a lot of hurdles in order to be able to use that exception without a pandemic. But we'll provide a council kind of an updated legislative update. That way, you know kind of all those bills that got signed. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I hope you get better. Anything on the water supply?
Just quick, real quick, we continue to track the state board process regarding the voluntary sharing, water sharing agreement. As council knows, that has been put on hold because of the FERC decision that affected the amount of inflow to Lake Mendocino, which is our primary reservoir, supporting flows in the Russian River. But with that said, they are continuing to look at that process and implementing, and considering implementing a new process for how that program may be modified or changed in the current environment. So we're just continuing to monitor and track, and we'll certainly bring those, bring any of those changes forward as they develop.
Thank you. Anything on COVID-19?
No updates, Mayor.
Any direction on any future agenda items? Hearing none. Meeting adjourned at 9 o'clock. Thank you, everyone, for being here.